I would like to call to order. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the December 3, 2024, regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. I'm Stu Hardy, Chairman of the Board, and I would like to begin as usual with a roll call. Christopher Schreiber expects to be here tonight, but he is, he may be a few minutes late. William Gerlach?
Present.
Janice Gomes is on an extended visit for Thanksgiving in New Jersey, I believe, right? So she will not be with us tonight. Richard Taylor?
Here.
Rosemary Eva?
Present.
Patricia Hilton?
Present.
V A Lopes is not here yet. We haven't heard from her, at least I haven't heard anything. And Stephen Clark?
Present.
So we have a quorum. And the first item on our agenda is Stafford View Farm Phase Two. And this is, this is that portion of Stafford View Farm, which is directly across the street on Bogomash Road, across the street from the library, near Bliss Four Corners. And this is a nine lot, this particular phase is a nine lot subdivision, and it goes way back to 2011. And Phase One of that project, however, has already been pretty much built out. Bill, I think all of the lots have been sold, correct?
That's correct.
But not all of them have been built on yet.
I think they're all built on.
All built on, yep.
I think we need a second coat of asphalt on the road.
Right, right.
So a few odds and ends.
A few odds and ends, so. And, and this item has been continued a couple of times. So I would like to invite both Bill Smith, the civil engineer for the applicant. The applicant is Chris Harkins, and also Mr. Landry, who was the legal counsel. And I would like to invite them to give us an explanation of why they think the vesting should be reinstated, either for the master plan, if it's not already vested, or for the preliminary plan. And I would also like to call your attention to, to two documents that you should have in your packet. We have a memo for Mr. Smith, or a letter for Mr. Smith to the Planning Board dated July 24, in which Mr. Smith makes a case. And we also have a memo from Ashley dated August 4. And basically Ashley is, is giving us the whole chronology. So it's got quite a history. It goes way back. So having said that, I would invite Mr. Landry or Mr. Smith to...
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, that introduction. I wasn't involved in the permitting of this project. I got involved more, more recently.
Jerry Leary was involved. The late, great Jerry Leary.
Late, great Larry, Jerry Leary. Absolutely. You know, I, so I've done, I've had to go through the same process as you, trying to understand the timeline here. And tonight, you know, we're here to talk practicalities and to kind of put the key facts on the table. And to make, to ask you to consider a couple of things. And you, this goes back to 2011. You've got a very large site here. It was over 60 acres when, when Chris Harkins started out here with this. It's basically a cluster of rural residential, rural major subdivision, small lots, lots of open space. It's in the watershed area. This, this is a lot closer to your current, very current zoning than most of the properties that I've seen in the States. Not that far off from where you are right now. The master plan and preliminary plan contemplated 16 lots that range from 28,000 square feet to 77,000 square feet, and lots of open space. Phase One was fully built out. The projects went together in, in the master plan and preliminary plan permitting. They both got through preliminary. Phase One went to final for seven of the 16 units. Interestingly, the final plan, the record plan, has all of the lots for Phase Two dashed into it, identified. And obviously, they weren't approved, but it shows the layout of Phase Two into the remaining nine lots. And that's, the total is 43 acres. About 35, I believe, is suitable, suitable acreage. And you had, you had nine, nine lots, and lots and lots of, of open space, usable open space. Not all 35 acres is usable, but, but, but an awful lot of usable open space. After the preliminary plan was approved, Mr. Harkins continued, as he was working on the infrastructure for Phase One, to also work on the infrastructure for Phase Two. Clearing, grubbing, doing best management practices for the stormwater management. There were some DEM permits that needed to be reinstated. Those were initially gotten for the whole site. After Phase One was approved, he went back and, and is still at DEM for the approvals on Phase Two. But as I understand it, under the, under the old wetland regulations, is that right, Bill?
That's correct.
Yeah, that, so the projects, because of, because of the work was, a lot of the work was done. They're still proceeding under the old wetland regulations. So there's been not necessarily a continuous daily work on both, on both sides, but there has been important work that has happened on Phase Two since the Phase One plan was approved. There's no question that we're beyond the usual four years of vesting, the traditional four years of vesting, on both the master plan and the preliminary plan. But there are a couple of bases for extending the vesting period if, if, if the Board chooses to do so. One has to do with the phasing section of the general laws. When projects are phased, they both go together to the master plan stage. There's nothing says that they can't both go together to the preliminary plan stage like they did here. But then they, then they split off. The idea is to, you know, is to have phased projects and not have everything built at once. And the vesting, it's got kind of a unique vesting under those. When you have a phased project, the master plan remains vested as long as it can be proved to the satisfaction of the Planning Board that work has been proceeding on either the approval stages or on the construction of the development, as shown in the approved master plan documents. So there's been, there's been both. There's been work on the ground. There have been permitting efforts at the state level to move forward on the second, on the second phase. There's also a provision in the general laws for reinstatement of expired master plans where, where you don't have the option for continued vesting, as you do here. It doesn't appear that those are really well-developed in the town zone subdivision regulations. They make reference to them, 452362. There has to be a procedure for reinstatement of plans.
I would interrupt you, Bill, because we do have a procedure.
Oh, is it? Is it? Maybe I've got a, I don't have the most codified or most recent version.
No, it's from 2003, 23-48 of the subdivision regulations.
Well, this, the, the one that I got that was approved November 5, 2019, doesn't have a 2348, unless somehow it got lopped off. It makes reference to 2348.
I can tell you, I don't know if you'll satisfy those anyways, the reinstatement provisions.
Okay.
Because Item One, the content of these regulations, and all other local, state, and federal regulations or guidelines applicable are substantially the same as at the time of the previous approval.
Okay.
We now have the conservation development in R 120, so I think, I think that strikes you out there. The zoning designation of the proposed development parcel has remained the same. That's been changed. Number five of that list, all permits from applicable state and federal agencies remain valid. I don't know, I'm just hearing now that DEM permits may be valid. I'm not sure.
They, we had to go back. Just correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. Bill, Bill had to go back after the first phase was approved and wanted to look at the second phase separately. And that permitting process, even though it had been completed once, has not been completed the second time.
Right.
So, and I think I've got the key to the problem, the issue here. The set of the regulations that I printed out while I was traveling today, these are the approved amendments from 2019. So presumably, there are sections here that didn't need to be included in the amendments. But that, but what you've just said to me is kind of what I expected to find because it's similar to what we see in other places. So, so I think we're on the same page that that would not be an easy fit, the reinstatement. The, the planning, and I, and I think Ashley's memo makes some reference to the fact that the Planning Board would have to be involved in, in weighing in on continued vesting. The, the, the state law is pretty, pretty vague as to when this happens and how it happens. But it certainly does provide for this extra vesting for projects that have continued to progress beyond the normal time parameters. Now that's, you know, that's all the legal stuff. There is a basis to recognize continued vesting here. I guess the bigger question is, why would we do that? You know, why, what are the reasons why we think the Planning Board should consider that? And one is because, you know, it's a pretty good project. Phase One went off very well, very successfully. It's, it's clustered type of development, built around basically three-acre zoning because it's in the aquifer area, and it's, it's pretty close to current, current zoning. There's a lot of open space here. You know, to send this back to ground zero, you know, these days, most people wouldn't proceed with a convention, with a plan that, that is by right under the local zone. If you're dealing with 43 acres, you know, 35 suitable, and it's all residential, if, if these permits have expired, that area of the second phase, it's got a ton of frontage on Bogomash Road. And normally, the, an applicant would consider a comp permit under the densities allowed under the state law, and it would be a very different kind of project. I don't, I don't think it would end up with the kind of open space that there is here. It's hard to predict these things. But, you know, every time we look at the State Act, it's providing more and more flexibilities, minimum density bonuses. You know, the overarching focus is on creating the housing unit. So we're only talking about nine units here on 43 acres, the vast majority of which is developable. And I've got a client that, for now, is content to do, to continue to do what he got approved for without starting some new process here over, over this, this 43 acres. And, and, you know, continue to work at what I think this board felt was a, was a good project at the time, and it's still a good project. So, I mean, he's got to do something with this land. If, if he goes back to ground zero, he starts with a new project and has to evaluate what's best for him in, in starting a new project. And that may not look anything like this plan, but he's committed to this plan. If, and he's still working on it at DEM as we speak. And, and hasn't pulled the plug on it, and really doesn't want to. But, but that's going to depend on what we can accomplish in this discussion. That's all there is to it. I, I think, I'm not sure there's anything in Ashley's memo that I disagree with. She's got the right analysis, the right section of the general laws that the Board could utilize to apply its discretion to try to get back on track with this project as originally approved. And we'd like you to consider that, if you would.
So thank, thank you, Mr. Landry. And I'd just like to add up an, an item or two to, to your excellent summary of the history of this project, because I, I don't go back all the way to the beginning. Only Rosemary does, but, but I came in maybe halfway into it. The Board should know that there is an Algonquin gas pipeline easement that traverses the entire property. So that, that adds a wrinkle to doing site layout. And Phase One, which is Luke Drive, very, it turned out very well. I completely agree with Mr. Landry. It's a very attractive subdivision. It is entirely on the south side, which is to say the Bogomash Road side of that particular lot. So it's south of the easement. North of the easement is open space that goes all the way, that goes down to Stafford Pond. And of course, Stafford Pond is a, is a drinking water reservoir. It's an impaired waterway. It has a TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Loading Program, to try to clean it up. So that, that is a concern, but, but Phase One turned out fine. We all supported Phase Two. And in fact, I'd like to remind everybody that we actually granted a waiver of our requirement that there be a couple of affordable units. That was before we had the Fee and Lou program. And I remember, I think Steve Osterguy of Church Community Housing actually produced a letter saying that it would be very difficult for the, for the applicant to, to sell affordable lots at that particular time. So we, we waived that requirement. So we've, I, I think the Planning Board has been very cooperative all along, and, and I think we've gotten good results so far. So we'd like to work with you on this and do whatever we can to, to, to both accommodate the applicant so that he doesn't have to go back to the drawing board and start all over again. But also to take into consideration a lot of new information that we have about Stafford Pond, and, and the need to do even more to protect it because the TMDL program has not produced the results that we had all hoped would produce. And, and the pond water testing results show that we still have a very impaired water situation there. So I'd like to work with the applicant to see if there's anything we can do. Certainly not cutting back the, the number of units. I think we approved nine units. At the present time, the plan, the master plan that at least I have shows four of the nine lots, housing lots, residential lots, would be on the water side of the Algonquin right-of-way or easement, natural gas easement. So of the nine, four would, would be closer to the pond, and five would be closer to Bogomash Road. So, you know, that might stay the, the way it is, or might change. But I, I'd like to, I'd like to see some discussion at least of, of that and see if, if the applicant can figure out a way of, of maybe doing something a little more to protect the pond. So having said that, I'd like to ask Todd and Ashley if they have any comments that they'd like to make. And, and then we'll, I'll ask the Planning Board if they have any comments or questions, because none of you were here. Only Rosemary and I were, were around back in those days. And I, I, by the way, I think I made the motion to approve Phase One. So I'm, 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 I think it turned out very well.
So, so Bill, I guess my concern is actually having facts that we can rely on to say that there's been continued activity. I don't know if we need that in the form of an affidavit, so I can craft a decision for the Board?
Could do that. I could, I'd hope that Mr. Harkins would be here tonight. We, we expected to see him. Maybe he thought it was deeper into the agenda. But we could do that. We could submit an affidavit that affirms the facts. I, I double-checked them with Bill, who's been involved. And I think he, he's the one who explained to me the types of work that has been done. And he's been personally involved in the permitting aspect. So we could prepare that affidavit.
And I understand what you told us was just a broad overview right now.
Yeah.
And I'd expect more in an affidavit.
Sure.
May I ask Todd a question?
Sure.
The, the activity, does that involve physical activity on the site? Or does that involve, you know, permitting and engineering work as well?
No, I think it does extend to permitting and engineering work.
So both qualifies?
Both types of work qualifies as continued work.
Yeah, the statute's not crystal clear for us on it. It just says...
It's not bad.
The work is proceeding on either the, on either the approval stages or on the construction of the development, as shown in the approved master plan documents. And I think, just like when you go from master to preliminary plan, there's a lot of engineering work going on, but that's work on the project, right?
Out in the field?
That was the reason for my asking, because that's included. Because when you look at the historical DEM photographs, there hasn't been any site work done since Phase One. You know, there was a little sort of stubbed road that went in when Phase One was started, and that's it. It's, it's, there hasn't been any other physical work on the site since then.
Right. And Mr. Smith, I think you already acknowledged is that Luke Drive has to have TOPCO put on.
Yes.
Anything we do is going to be contingent on that being completed.
I would anticipate that, sure.
We've received at least one call.
Got a set monuments, that sort of thing, like you normally would close out a, a project.
Bill, you, you probably recall the, the lengthy discussions about sidewalk. And the applicant did agree to, to a cement or concrete, as opposed to asphalt, a, a nice sidewalk, similar to the one that the library put in across the street. And, and that sidewalk was to have run, I believe, from the east side of Luke...
To Duncan Donuts property.
To, to the Duncan Donuts property line. So, so that's another bit of, of issue that we can, we can discuss.
We've gotten the permits from DOT for, for that work as well.
Right. So that, so that would be another item. But again, we're flexible about what makes sense in terms of timing. I just wanted to remind you of that.
Yeah, we, we did agree to put the sidewalk in, but it was going to be done under the Phase Two portion of the work.
Yeah. And the reason why we asked for sidewalks is that, at, at the time, we did not yet have that park next to the library. But that park has become, I go to the library quite a bit. That park is very, very well-used. Kids are walking and riding bicycles on the sidewalk on that side of the street. The Sandy Woods Farm development is still being built out. There is still construction going on, way behind what you can see from Bogomash Road. I was back there two weeks ago, and I was amazed at the number of houses that are going up back there. So that, that, the whole, I, I think that since we're the Planning Board, we need to think about planning for Bliss Four Corners. Bliss Four Corners is getting busier and busier and more built out. And so, so I think that, that a sidewalk is a really nice pedestrian amenity. I'm sort of taking the role of Peter Mona's. And I'm hoping I'm doing it in a pleasant manner.
I'm going to skate out of my lane just a little bit and go towards what Mr. Hardy was discussing about the lots on the water side of Algonquin, and whether those are still going to be feasible, given the condition of Stafford Pond. Trish is going to correct me if I'm wrong, right? And whether, for example, lots six and seven should be moved so that they actually front on Bogomash Road where there's currently open space. Swap that open space with six and seven.
When we initially did the development, we were, we had, it was expanded a little bit. I think we started with 18 lots. We were, we were told we'd rather knock, knock the number of lots down and in lieu of putting the affordable houses in, just go with a, a non-affordable subdivision. We act, we actually, initially, we were going to try and push up a little closer to the pond. The Board said, no, we want you to provide as much protection as you could. We did pull, pull the houses back. We can certainly look at that and see if we, we can adjust that. We were asked to put a, an open space around the entire project between this development and any of the other, other properties. So that's, that's kind of why we, we laid it out the way that we did. You know, ideally, it'd be great to have some of these houses right on the pond, but because of the sensitivity of the pond, we, we pulled that back. We are working with DEM Wetlands now on an updated permit. The older permit had expired. We did submit, and we've been working with them. One of the components that they are asking us for is to, TMDL's protection of the pond and trying to, to make sure that that, we're not doing any damage to the pond. So we're, we're trying to work through that. A lot of that final, finalization of that permit will depend on what the Board tells us in terms of, can we go back with, with our Phase Two, generally as, as permitted, maybe tweaked a little bit? Or whether we, you know, we're going to have to start from scratch?
So, so we have recently adopted conservation development for subdivisions of, what, four or more residential properties. And in the course of doing that, we've, we've sort of educated ourselves. And we have a 10-step process. And a lot of that has to do with site design, to make sure that we're protecting the land that is really, has real strong environmental sensitivities and really needs to be protected. So we're a whole lot better educated now, I think, as a Planning Board than we were back then. I know I am. And, and I know, Bill, you probably remember that you and I had a lot of discussions at Planning Board meetings about, about, you know, where properties should go. So I, I think that, you know, we would also like to consider, reconsider some of the, some of the requirements, you know, that we set on you. One, one of the principles, I think, of conservation development is to, is, is to, of not string out the open space as we used to do, all around the property edge, but rather aggregate that open space to maximize the environmental protection and the environmental values. So I would kind of like to maximize the open space to the extent we can, understanding the constraints that the developer has, to, you know, to protect as much land right on the pond as possible. And to, and to pull the, and to pull the residential lots a little farther away from the pond is, you know, to the extent practicable. And, and again, I'd like this to be, I'd like this to be a kind of a, something that we will work with you to, to achieve so that you'll, at the end of the day, you'll be happy, and we will too.
To, um...
Yes, Tricia.
You know, to the point about the pond and to reiterate what Stu was saying earlier, you know, that is that that reservoir is the sole source of water for all the customers in the Stonebridge District and provides half the water for North Tiverton. It has been impaired since the late 90s. It had the first remediation program ever administered in the state. And while we made some pretty good progress the first 10 years, slowly but surely, we started to go backwards. And, you know, now we're at a point where we're, you know, really working to hold on to that as a public drinking water supply because we don't have a replacement for it. Yet regularly testing, you know, it exceeds limits for phosphorus, for dissolved oxygen and for fecal coliform. So, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do is keep as much development away from the edge of the pond and provide as much of a buffer area between development and, you know, an untouched wooded buffer, which is the best filtration system we can find.
Contiguous buffer.
Contiguous buffer. But to Stu's point about the conservation development and Bill, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at this probably more thoroughly, but there's quite a bit of flexibility in there in terms of things like lot width or frontage requirements. In many cases, it's shrunk down to almost nothing so that rather than forcing developers to create, you know, essentially sort of rectangular or pretty much rectangular-shaped lots, there's a lot more flexibility for a regular-shaped lot or a lot that doesn't have a lot of frontage, plus a lot of flexibility with, you know, a shared driveway. And I know there's one on this plan, but there's even more flexibility in that. So, you know, potentially, there are some elements in that conservation development plan that might help you, you know, move a little bit away from the pond if possible and, you know, be able to have the same number of, and it might give you some better sighting opportunities. You sometimes sort of lessen up with the house, house, house thing where you can sort of, you know, fit them into the landscape. And ideally for the developer, you know, maybe less road, less clearing, less grading, less, you know, infrastructure installation because it's, you know, it's in a smaller area. So there may be some tools in there that could help a little bit too.
And I'm just wondering about the topography of the lot and whether or not there might be some opportunities for the developer to identify some high-ground areas where the new houses will have a water view of the pond. So that would be a nice economic trade-off, not maybe as close to the pond, but with a water view. And that would, you know, that would compensate, I think, and add to the value of that property.
One of the things that was incorporated in the original subdivision was between the lots, we kept a wooded strip or buffer. We could certainly crowd that a little bit. Maybe the houses could be a little bit closer together and the exchange would be that we provide more open space closer to the pond and closer to the, you know, the area of concern. We could look at the layout of the lots, the conservation development.
That would be great.
I have one other question. Are you in Stonebridge's Water District here? It looks like you're a bit on the edge of it. Is that the water supplier for Phase One?
I thought all new development now was through North Tiverton.
It might be. I'm just looking at, I mean, I wasn't on the board back then, so I don't know. It looks like the western edge of Luke or, you know, Phase One is in Stonebridge's District, but maybe it's, maybe you've got North Tiverton there.
I'll have to double-check. I'm honestly not 100% sure of the answer to that.
I know it's only nine lots, but it would probably be a good idea to touch base with the Water District too, again, these days they're being a little more cautious about...
We had gotten letters from them initially back in 2011, 12.
A lot has changed.
You might need an updated...
I think Frank died.
Should be okay.
Paul Denstrom would probably be the person.
So do you, and does anybody else have any comments or questions? And does the applicant have enough feedback from us to know that, you know, where, sort of where we're coming from? I think, I think basically, we're looking forward to working with you and working out a solution that we can all be happy with at the end of the day.
Appreciate that.
We do appreciate the feedback. I think it's constructive and it may, it may make sense for us to come back on a conceptual basis like this with some concept plan alternatives that we could discuss and just kind of jump rock for, rock to rock.
Oh, yes. That would be very helpful, I think.
I don't think it would hurt to have an ERS on, since it's been so long a time involved. And we did give a waiver, I think, on Phase Two, not having to have the individual ERS.
I think we did one and we got the approval for the...
For the entire...
One and two, yes.
And that was granted by the board.
Are there later plans than the ones that were recorded in 2016?
Well, the ones that were recorded in 2016 were for Phase One, so Phase Two, we've been...
Well, yeah, as far as the layout and the information for Phase Two.
Yeah. Essentially, we were asking to have Phase Two reinstated, so we were going to use something very similar or basically identical plans. But I think we have some flexibility if the board's willing to work with us to try and improve that based on what we've heard tonight.
I think what we are aiming towards is calling the master plan for Phase Two vested if there's sufficient facts. And then as we would with any other project, you would present a preliminary plan application and that may be something different than, slightly different than what was approved for the master plan. Is that your, Mr. Andrew, do you...
That would be fine.
Is that...
Yeah, that would be fine, or the preliminary plan reinstated, but it doesn't matter. As long as something is vested, we can, we can move wherever we need to go. It can be an amended master plan or vesting of a master plan and the next plan you see is a preliminary plan where we've got DEM and whatever else we name. It's only, it's not a huge project, so I think we could take a step back from the preliminary plan approval here and do it over again. I think that would be fine.
I just want to do it right procedurally for everyone.
Yeah. Yeah, because it does say, this business about phasing does say the master plan can remain vested. Doesn't say anything about the preliminary plan, which is kind of odd. So I think that would be fine. I need to talk to Chris, but I'm going to, I would certainly recommend that.
Okay.
I think vesting the master plan will give you the number of lots and then you could, we can play with where they end up based on the feedback that you're getting with a, you know, maybe a different layout at the preliminary plan and we can kind of go back and forth until everybody feels comfortable.
Yeah. No, that's a good direction. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me and, and once we start this process and we're satisfied, we can move it pretty quickly.
Yeah.
A lot, we're moving things a lot quicker now than we used to.
Great. That's good.
So the final, typically, we allow that to be approved administratively now so you don't have to come back for a final plan approval like you used to in the old days. That's it. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
I had one comment. You know, the thing that, reading through this, I wasn't on the board and over the 13 years trying, if it hadn't have been for Ashley's timelines and one thing or another, it would have been tough to do that. But I guess the thing that bothered me was nobody bothered to come back or say anything to the board here. A status, if it's happening outside of our view with the state going, getting DEM permits updated and all of that, it was like it just sit fallow. I mean, early, when they were grubbing and stuff, there was a lot of activity and then it just stopped. And it hasn't been anything really for a number of years. And I thought it was pretty clear that, you know, that it could be reinstated after one year past termination and you already really got two years of extension automatically that if it was nothing more than a status to say, hey, we are working on this, it is, you know, redoing the septic system permits and some of those things. Not, I mean, for all intents and purposes, I drive by there every day and for all intents and purposes, nothing was, nothing was going on and it just come to a stop. If you're going to rely on earlier permissions, granted, then it's nice to know that, hey, that's still a viable thing.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it sounds like, and no one's, this is just a discussion here on both ends, but it sounds like it's moving towards somewhere in the middle where there's some extra time that, you know, may be debatable as to whether it should be granted, or we could come out with a better project. And, you know, it seems like a good thing to try to do from our, from our perspective. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Andrew's going to give us some additional facts, more detailed facts.
Yeah. You're not going to see gangbusters progress on Phase Two. You're going to see most of the work having been done while the Phase One houses were being built, but that's all post-preliminary plan approval, you know? It wasn't, it wasn't post-Phase One, but they both got preliminary at the same time and there was work that was being done for a time period and is permitting. That's occurred during that period. I mean, it's not continuous, I think that's the first thing I said, but it wasn't as if there wasn't anything happening.
And the forest grew back.
And the forest grew back.
All the trees matured.
There was discussion about the surety too, flipping the surety from Phase One to Phase Two and we said no, and that might have been another deterrent.
Well, that, I think that's why, his expectation was to go forward and build, build the roads and, you know, he was doing the other project, the Cassett project and only so many things you can do at once, so that was, that was part of what was going on.
And tolling didn't take, didn't do any justice to it too.
That's right. Beyond the tolling.
So procedurally, you're going to give us a list of, or an affidavit of all the continuous work that's occurred and when it occurred and then that, we're going to bring that back to the board and then they'll make a decision on the master plan based on that?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
No, that's something the board has to consider. We'll provide it to you, staff first and council, but ultimately, it's, the board's going to have to consider that. And we'll have Mr. Harkins here personally as well, so it's not just an affidavit. He can be, ask questions about it.
Good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
So that is the only applicant on our agenda tonight and so now we can move into, into planning board business. And the first item on our long planning board business agenda is a discussion and possible vote with regard to engaging a hydrology engineer to look into the water challenges that we have in Tiverton. And I'm going to call on Tricia to bring us up to speed on some of the discussion she's had with the University of Rhode Island recently and possible resources that we can get from URI. But before I do that, before I call on Tricia, I'd like to just remind everybody that we have a lot of verbiage in our comprehensive community plan about the soil and water constraints for development in large parts of our town. We don't have an aquifer. Our wells, and a lot of the town depends on well water, our wells tap into fissures in the bedrock. We have saturated soils in many parts of town. Our soil is of a flinty nature that does not do a very good job of breaking down bacteria. So anything that, so it doesn't treat the septic systems as well as it might. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of issues and we have been working on those issues for quite a long time. We have a number of qualified, we have had a number of qualified experts in the past 10 or 15 years who have come to town, who have studied the conditions and who have made recommendations. And I'd just like to remind everybody that two people from the NEMO program at URI, Rhode Island Cooperative Extension Service, Non-Point-and-Source Pollution Education for Municipal Officials, Lauren Jubert and Lisa Philo came to Tiverton and sat down in a workshop with both the town council, when Tricia was president of the town council, and with the planning board and did a PowerPoint presentation. And you can get a hard copy of that PowerPoint presentation in the planning office. And they made a number of recommendations. We, above the same time, we also had something called the Atlantic State's Rural Water and Wastewater Association. Take a look at issues associated with water pollution in Nonquit Pond. The Nonquit Pond watershed is huge. It covers most of South Tiverton and they came up with a number of recommendations. That was Galen McGovern and Mark Cohen, if you remember that. And we have a study with recommendations. And most recently, we have had a low-impact development assessment based on the state protocol for doing that kind of an assessment completed. And that has 60-odd recommendations. All of these, all of these recommendations, or at least a large majority of them, have to do with water. So, so we have serious issues in town and I just wanted to give you that, a little bit of that background. And all of these documents are available to you. In fact, I've asked Ed to share those doc, hard copies of those documents or electronic copies of those documents with you so that you, you will have those at your fingertips. So having said that, as a little bit of background, I'd like to call on Tricia Hilton to bring us up to speed on what she's been doing in her, with respect to her conversations with URI.
Well, thank you. This is a little bit of a joint conversation with Ashley too, because I think we discussed the last time, the possibility of having two different kinds of water consulting resources. One would be that when we have a large development come in or a large commercial development that needs public water, someone who would peer review North Tiverton's hydrologic study report and someone who would peer review whatever documentation we get from Stonebridge because they don't have a hydrologic model. So that there would be somebody who would look at it similar to what... So that there would be somebody who would look at it similar to what Nathan does when he reviews engineering plans. And, and I believe that Ashley's firm has those resources, so it might simply be a matter of, and, and there are people at Ashley's firm right now who are working with North Tiverton on their hydrologic model and trying to help Stonebridge come up with something. And my understanding, and I, I think I understand this correctly, if you look in the budget, you won't see a line item, a line item for Nathan, because Nathan's compensation or Weston and Sampson's compensation for that work comes out of application fees and escrow or however that, whatever it works. So I think, I'm going to ask Ashley to maybe talk about that person and whether or not we would potentially need to amend our fee schedule if we were requiring a peer review for public water.
So you, you currently have the ability within your regulations to have a peer review and have the applicant pay for that peer review?
And we have done that.
Yes.
Do we, would we have to specify this if it were a peer review of a hydrologic model or a peer review of a letter from Stonebridge?
I'm going to interrupt for a second. I think we're using the term wrong. A peer review is hire a third party to review independently. Nathan is not a peer review.
Right, right.
He's a consulting engineer to this board.
Okay.
And I think what you are asking for is a consulting engineer.
Who does hydrology, right.
To this board. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Go ahead.
So, but would we have to, would we have to make any amendments in order to include hydrology as part of that to our existing regulations?
I don't think so. I don't think the regulations are specific on topics that you can have reviewed.
Your support staff includes a consultant engineer.
So you're, you're simply looking for a consulting engineer that has a specific type of knowledge in terms, in, different from like site civil knowledge where they're looking at all aspects of a, of a plan and how it's laid out. The two resumes that I gave you are gentlemen at the firm who are specifically educated and have experience with geology and hydrogeology. And that, as, as you know, is all about groundwater and where it comes from and how it works depending on your soils, your bedrock and all of those things. So you're, you know, Nathan looks at things in a, in general, in general site civil engineering terms for you. This is something that is, you know, a, a specific type of engineering. I think it would be covered under your ability to have an engineer review. I definitely think that it's covered under the current agreement that we have under the state's master price agreement for engineering and planning services.
So, so maybe in that direction, I don't know how the rest of the planning board feels, but in my mind, it would be good, it, on the public water side, it would be good to have a person, someone who, just like Nathan, is our regular person, a regular person who's familiar with the structure at North Tiverton, familiar with the structure at Stonebridge, who is a consulting engineer can look at what we've been provided and say, yes, you should feel comfortable going forward with this, or no, because, you know, approving, approving a development that potentially can't get enough water from the public water supplier is a really, that, that's a really big problem. So I don't know where, I don't know how we go forward to identify that person and have them, you know, regularly be available to us when we need them for projects to look at.
So my suggestion for that, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to grab her most recent resume, so you don't have that in front of you, but the person that I would have be that for you from Weston and Sampson is Nicole Lewis, and she is the, she's the lead on the project that we're doing with North Tiverton and Stonebridge. And so she's already familiar with North Tiverton's hydrological model, she's already familiar with what Stonebridge has and doesn't have, and has a basic understanding of those two water systems, and her knowledge will only grow as she gets further into that project, where we're, we're, we're working with Stonebridge to get what they do have to see how we can fill that gap and if we're able to do a reasonable comparison, joining that information together to look at the, the two districts as kind of a whole system. I feel very confident that she would be the best person for that role because she has, she's already in there. I will get you her resume, I just, unfortunately, I couldn't get it. They're like under lock and key by marketing, you can't just go grab them. So I think she would serve you well for that purpose. And then the other two resumes that I gave you were, who I think would be best suited to be able to provide you with, you know, information when we're not dealing with the public water system and we're dealing with wells, because they're going to have a, you know, they're going to have a decent understanding of hydrology and what's below the surface and what's going on there. And to, you know, Tricia's point, we've talked a little bit about that it might, it might make sense to have them help us develop, you know, additional questions that get asked, additional checklist items that are required depending on where development is located or how large the development is, that there are probably, there's probably information that we could be asking for, that we're not asking for, that would give you a better understanding of water availability and ability to service development. But we need somebody with that expertise to help us understand what it is we should be asking for, and then once we get it, what does it mean?
So, so to that point, it, it might be that that's a different kind of a project than having a consulting engineer who specializes in hydrology, who looks at an application for public water and says, yes, this is going to work or no, it isn't. Because, because it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a situation where you're going to have a hydrologist, you have a development of 43 houses and you're saying, is this going to work? It's more that you need to, we need to get a better handle on the whole groundwater system in Tiverton, separate from any developments, right? The whole groundwater system, both the quality and the quantity. But then we need some guidance on, under what circumstances do we require additional tests? Which tests are those, you know, and, and how to interpret the results? So it's more someone who would help us develop a framework for, A, understanding what we have in a much more thorough way than we do, and then helps us create a, a matrix of, under these circumstances, you should be asking for this flow test, or you should be asking for this gauge test, or you need these water quality reports. Ashley has some folks at her firm who might be able to do that, and she's provided us resumes. I also, at the recommendation of Laurence Hubert at URI, spoke, we had a conference call, Stu is going to join me, but his computer was not cooperating, we did this via Zoom, with Dr. Thomas Bovin, he is the chair of the Department of Geosciences at URI, and they basically specialize in geohydrology, this is what they do. They are currently, he and two of his colleagues are also, you know, professors, you know, PhD doctors at university, are currently enrolled in a multi-year study in Little Compton, where they've got about 120 wells enrolled in a program for study. After speaking with them, they had two recommendations. One is first to get a much better handle on what is actually in the ground, and they advised a similar program to what they're doing in Little Compton, although looking at different things, which would be to enroll some number, and a fairly significant number of wells that are geographically dispersed around the community, and then essentially study those wells. It's a volunteer program, it doesn't cost the homeowners anything, they just have to be willing to let somebody, you know, take water out of their tap, over a period of time, which gives them an idea for the relationship of the groundwater to precipitation to well recharge, and it also gives them an opportunity to look at quality of the water. Some things like nitrates, right? If you start to find areas where there are high nitrates, then you have to be really cautious about a lot of development. But they also look at quality because it helps them identify how the groundwater is impacted. In other words, there are certain things like total dissolved solids, that when you have high levels of total dissolved solids, it's telling you that the groundwater recharge is pretty limited, because when you have big recharge, then that number gets a lot smaller. Anyway, that would be part one of what they would recommend that we would do. And then part two would be to identify a set of short-term recommendations on a sort of matrix, similar to what we were talking about, about when you would require extra testing from a developer doing a large project. And then, and then finally, at the end of this study of multiple wells, which might take a year or so, then you can be even more specific, because doing that geographically would allow you to identify the most fragile in terms of groundwater portions of the town, right? So it, there you, you'd be, you might be more restrictive about development or additional tests versus other parts of the town where they might say, listen, there's great veins there, you're, you're going to be good. They were super talked to, this is what they do. They said that they were very sorry that we were so incredibly challenged from a water quality and quantity perspective, because they completely get the fractured bedrock thing, they completely get the hydroic soil and the poor soil for septic systems. They said, we're sorry for you, but for us, this is great because we love this kind of project, because this is right in our wheelhouse. They did say that, while that sounds like a lot of work, the benefit that they have, they understand municipalities don't have a lot of funds, and on the plus side, they have graduate students. And so a lot of the actual labor and testing and all of that work is done by graduate students who are doing this as, as, you know, part of their thesis or, or other such thing. What we agreed to do is that they are going to get back to us within a week or so with a proposal and estimated costs and that we can review. So I think probably the best thing to do to be able to do apples and oranges is we have resumes of two folks that look on paper incredibly qualified, but, you know, since this is going to cost us something, see if we can get some sort of proposal from Weston and Sampson as to how they would approach this and what, you know, a cost estimate, and that's maybe the best way to evaluate this second kind of water consultancy. Todd's looking at me like he's, I'm not making any sense.
Right. Because I think you can have, I think we can revise your regulations or your rules and procedures to specify a water consultant, and whether it's public water or well water, we could go straight to them, and then you can have your, your URI study separate from that. And that would eventually inform the water consultant for the board. But I'm simple, so.
Yeah. I know, I think so. But I think, I think, I think to me, part one seems pretty simple. We have a relationship with Weston and Sampson, we have somebody who's already working, again, this is my opinion, but who's already working in the water districts, right? Who really knows what's going on there. To have that person advise us seems to make a whole lot of sense. I, so I think that's.
You can do that today, in my opinion.
Right. So if we can do that today, we can do that today, which is awesome.
Public well or private well? Public water or private water?
Or private water. The private water though, I think, just from an educational purpose, it's not going to hurt us to get a proposal and see what, see how, whether or not the recommendations are all the same, or this is the kind of, you know, I think that would be good going forward.
So I might suggest that you, you wait and see what the URI proposal looks like, and then do, take a look at that and review it, and consider whether you think that there's any, anything missing, that you're not going to get out of that URI study that Weston and Sampson could potentially supplement, because I'm going to tell you right now, I can't compete with graduate students that do work for free, so.
Well, I mean, this is not, I mean, we are, you know, I think the point of the graduate students was, what they're proposing does certainly involve a certain amount of work. If they're going to enroll wells and test, I mean, people are going to go out and collect water samples, right? But.
And it may be that they, they provide you with an initial amount of information, and if you're looking for more, maybe Weston and Sampson can then step in and help you take that, you know, that project or that information that much further, because I think you should take, I mean, I, I think you should take advantage of URI's offer, because I, I think you're, you're, we are not going to be able to do, match, you know, do that work for you for the same cost. I, I don't want to ask them to write you a proposal that I know that you're not going to select based on price. That seems a little unfair to do, to ask them to do that. But I do think that you could look at what URI comes back with, and maybe we could work with URI to broaden the scope of what they're going to do to, to fulfill all your goals, and we can have some collaboration and coordination, and with their agreement can work with them and kind of extend the work that they do to take it to the next level or to take it as far as you'd like it to go.
Okay. So my next question then on that, if we were to have, supposing we were to have a specific project, right, that involved groundwater. With the well wa, with the public water things, you know, you're going to get a report, right?
Yeah.
And, and that's it. You're going to look at that report and evaluate that report for, for its accuracy and its efficacy and all that. If it's a groundwater thing, then there may be other things that are required, so it might be more work from the person from Weston and Sampson to be able to review it. So that goes back to my question of, while it might be covered under the MPA, will it be covered under our fee structure, if that makes any sense? I just, I guess what I'm saying is, that could be a lot more expensive engineering consulting review than being provided all the data on paper.
Sure.
To make an evaluation. And so therefore, if we need that, would we need to consider a particular fee from the applicant to be able to cover that?
Wouldn't that just come from the escrow like any other fee would come from? I would think so.
And I think just to protect everyone, we should revise this bylaws to be more specific, that we have a site consultant, engineering consultant, hydrology consultant.
Okay.
And that's where I think Weston and Sampson can help you out a lot, like, I think you should take advantage of URI, see what we can do to work with them and what information we can get from it. We can, you know, agree to talk further about what proposal they come back with and what, you know, what Weston and Sampson can do to help you take that further. The other piece of it, I think, is that, once you're, once that's done, or once that's well underway, and you are starting to develop that matrix, and maybe we can help with that with URI? I don't, I don't know. We can kind of take it and see, just see how it goes. But I think ultimately, once that matrix is developed, you're going to have these triggers that depending on either size or location, that you're going to require additional information related to water, and those guys could be receivers of that information and do the kind of review of the information that the applicant is giving you, just like Nathan does the site civil review, they'd be looking at that specific water data that you're requiring in addition to because of where they're located or the size of the project, and we can, they can report back to you and say, yeah, this, this all makes sense, or they've missed something and you've got, you've got missing information here, or it's misrepresented, or whatever the outcome is. or whatever the outcome is. That would be my suggestion, based on, you know, what we've talked about and what we just talked about.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll be talking about the budget later on, and this kind of relates to the budget. Bill, did you have a?
Just a couple of comments here. First of all, I'm fully supportive of, of all of this. I think this makes a lot of sense. The URI angle and the ability to engage with them, to execute some sort of longitudinal study and build up a, pardon the pun, a reservoir of localized data that we can use for policy, for whatever, on a go-forward basis, is investment well spent, if you ask me. So, I think we should move forward. It sounds like we're getting the proposal from them. That sounds like a great move. It sounds like, at least on the public water project front, we could take some tangible next steps in terms of modifying our regs to be able to capture whatever sort of detail we need about, you know, a water engineer there. That sounds like a concrete next step, and maybe by the time we get to our next meeting, we could review that and be able to make a, you know, decision on that. I just wanna be able to like, this is the right thing to do, so what are concrete next steps that we can take to sort of build some momentum, carry us forward, so we're not here six months from now still saying it's a really good idea?
So if we were to, if we were to date Amy, did you say?
Nicole.
Nicole. So if we were to, we were to hope for Nicole to be the person who could do this for us, do we need to do something?
I don't think, I mean, maybe Todd wants you to vote on it? I'm not sure. I mean, the town is under contract through the MPA for engineering and planning services with a rate schedule depending on, you know, people's qualifications. She would just fall under that, and she just, as an, basically as an on-call. When you need her, she'll, she'll come and she'll do what you ask, and.
Sounds good to me.
My only suggestion is we revise the bylaws, and that's easy enough to do. So the public is aware, and the applicants are aware that they may be charged not only for a site engineer consultant, but a hydrology consultant. Are there any other consultants that we should include?
I mean, if you're gonna start to be specific, can you do like an including but not limited to? And, because, I mean, transportation comes up all the time, you know?
I know.
And I'm worried about starting to list things, and then somebody saying, well, it's not in the list, so you can't do it now. You can't ask for that, because you didn't list it.
Unless it's a peer review, right? Which is different. I don't know where that line is.
Is a peer review different because of the mechanism that you're selecting the individual? Because they're essentially, they're, they're doing the same thing. It's just, they're, they're a stand, they're there, they're, we're, it's a standing relationship, instead of every time you need something, we have to like go find somebody?
I don't know how to answer that.
Okay. Fair enough.
So, we, we have something called an application fee schedule. So when an applicant comes in here, they pay a fee when they submit their application, and that covers the cost of reviewing their application. It can't be, the town can't turn it into a money center and make a profit. That's not allowed under state law. But we can charge up to 100% of our legitimate costs for reviewing an application. We haven't reviewed our fee schedule in quite a while, and we might wanna do that. We might be charging too much. I'm guessing we're charging too little. So that's, that's one part of the equation. And we use that fee schedule to pay for these so-called peer reviewers. But keep in mind that a peer review does not look at the totality of the issue. It only looks at the methodology that the applicant's engineer has used to, to come up with conclusions. So it focuses on methodology, not the results of the study. So, and as we all know, the peer reviews, particularly the traffic peer reviews, always turn out the same. Everything is just hunky-dory. Never, ever, in my 13 years on the planning board, have I ever heard anything else from a peer reviewer in traffic. So, we have to be a little careful of that, and I think that we want, we don't want that kind of, and that happens because these people work for firms that also work for developers. And that's a conflict of interest. So, you know, so we, we need to get around, when we're dealing with water, we need to get around that problem, for sure.
I, I can guarantee that we don't pose that issue, because we don't work traditionally. 98% of our clientele is municipal. We do very little private development work, and where we do it, it's not Rhode Island.
So, so the one question about that, though, is to, Stu's point about the application reviews. Do we need to, I'm sure that somebody knows the ballpark amount for what it, what the, out of the fee, you know, covers Nathan's reviewing work, right?
That's escrow.
That's paid for out of the escrow.
All of it.
Different than the application fee.
Okay. Do we need to worry about the escrow amount, though? If, because I don't know the amount of time and effort and energy, and so what the cost would be for, you know?
I think that's.
In terms of public water, for, from Nicole to do that work?
I think for Nicole, it's probably more standardized than it will be for the ground, for the well and groundwater part. Because we, we know what North Riverland's gonna do. They're gonna run a hydrologic model, and she's gonna review that model. I'm not 100% sure what Stonebridge is gonna do, but I, I feel confident that we're figuring that out slowly. So I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be more standardized in terms of its pricing, where location and size won't impact as much. You know, how much time it takes to do a review of whatever their model spits out. I think the groundwater and the well stuff is gonna be harder to gauge, because I think that is gonna be dependent, highly dependent on size and location. So it'll be really tough to pin down a price for something like that. The other thing that I think that these guys can offer you, that is gonna be hard to quantify, is that they will, if you ask them, they will look at things in a, in a more like qualitative, quantitative type of, of view, where they're not gonna just look at this, a siloed application. They're gonna consider that in the context of everything else that they know is going on. So that, I think that'll be harder to, to quantify a number for. But I think, is there any reason why these fees wouldn't come out of escrow either?
They would. That's why I'm trying to put them in as consultants, so we can do them as escrow.
Right.
But let's be clear about what, when you say escrow, are you talking about the surety that, that developers pay to the town to make sure that public improvements are completed fully and properly?
No.
And then we bring in Rick Rogers from DPW to say, yes, I am, our people have been helped, we've inspected the road.
No, it's different.
We've inspected the swales.
Different money.
Okay, so.
When they submit an application, they pay an application fee plus an escrow fee.
The escrow is held, and as things come up, Ed will pull from that escrow to pay for those things. So Nathan does his review, he bills the town and specifies the charges per project, and that he, the check get, basically gets cut and pulled out of that escrow.
Who, who sets the escrow?
It's in the regulations.
The engineer.
No, it's in the regulations.
And, and if it's an escrow, then at the end of the day, when everything has been approved, if there's any money left over, it gets returned. Okay.
And if escrow runs out and we're not done, we, we have to ask them to re-up the escrow.
As part of our review of the subdivision regulations, we need to take a look at, at escrow, fees, escrow, and maybe even surety. To make sure that we've got the economics.
Sureties are usually set on a per-project basis?
Sure. They have to be.
Right. With a, like, an advisory from DPW and the engineer that says, this is what you should hold.
Right, right, right. And, and we approve that. And we, you know, and we.
We set them on.
Okay.
So if we, so if we were to go forward with Nicole, do we need any kind of voters? It's just sort of?
I think you can do it right now.
Okay.
I'm going to revise your bylaws, so it's more clear.
Okay. And I'm gonna bring you Nicole's resume, so you'll have that, and I will let her know that she's basically on call.
Your bylaws.
So we, so we, so we have, we have planning board bylaws, we had planning board policies and procedures. Well, no, no.
We just updated them not that long ago.
We just updated them when Sue Gill was with us.
We did it since then.
We'll get a proposal from URI, and we'll have it on our next agenda. So we'll be able to review that.
We'll keep this on the agenda.
We'll keep that on the agenda, and that'll sort of inform us. I, I do agree with Bill. I think building, you know, building a geographic database, the other thing that they have access to is they have access to RI DOH's super-secret well-testing data that they used to make public. But they have well-testing data on just about every well that's gone in, in, I don't know what recent history, but it's not public. But the URI folks have access to it.
And I'll just, Charlestown has done a similar thing with nitrogen along the coastal ponds, where they've been doing this testing and mapping and collecting of data year after year after year, and they basically have the whole coastal area in Charlestown mapped for nitrogen. And they have a baseline dataset that they can use to, you know, kind of control what happens when new development comes forward. They, they have the science behind, behind their decisions.
Okay. And we'll have that to evaluate in January, and then maybe we can have some more information about if we need for, in the meantime, for a specific project, or, or an idea whether or not our escrow would cover, you know, if we needed to.
I can ask Nicole to give me a, a, like, range, like, for, you know, if it was a relatively small project, you know, what do you think it would take you? If it was a bigger project, what, what might it take you? At least that way we'll have a sense of whether or not we need to look at that escrow fee and up it based on this, or if it's gonna cover what we usually have to cover. The other thing I was gonna mention is if you want me to, I can share the URI proposal with these guys and ask them to take a look at it and see if they think that there's anything that they could build on from there, or if they, they think there's like a missing piece that we can add, and I can let you know kind of what their assessment of the proposal is. And Frank is already a little bit familiar, because he's, he's been here and helped out with some geology stuff previously, so.
Okay, so that brings us to, I believe that brings us to Agenda Item 2B, which is architectural design standards for the Waterfront 2 zone, the Waterfront 2 being the, the less intense, the less industrial. And you've all seen language that, that I drafted, based largely on Portsmouth's similar language. And Todd took that and then, and then put it into proper legal form as a, as an amendment to our subdivision regulations, and you all have a copy of that, it's back, back up. So I think all we need to do with this, and we've discussed this already, in fact, we've discussed it at several meetings. All we need to do tonight, I think, is to authorize staff to, to, to advertise a public hearing to amend our subdivision regulations. And, and I think we probably should do several things. I, I think that rather than just, you know, have a number of hearings on different aspects of subdivision regulations, that we probably should aggregate two or three or four things together and have a hearing on all of those items, because that will save advertising costs. Does that make sense to everybody? So I'm not sure that we're quite ready, but I would, I would like maybe, you know, authorize staff to, to look at when it makes sense, when we have enough items. And keep in mind that the subdivision regulations do not go to town council. We, we approve our own, but we have to approve them in the, in the context of a public hearing. So, and that requires advertising, so, I don't know, I think I'll, I'll leave it up to Todd and Ashley to decide when, and also when we have a meeting coming up that will not be a chock-a-block full of applications. So, leave it up, give them a little flexibility, decide when they think this could go on the agenda for a vote. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so, I don't, do we need to vote on that? I don't think we do.
We need to have a vote to advertise.
Okay, so, but we will allow staff to decide when to advertise, when it makes sense to advertise. So I will make a motion to authorize staff to expend the money and time to, to advertise a public hearing for, in this particular instance, architectural design standards for Waterfront 2.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, now, is there a discussion on this motion? Yes, I'm.
So, I just had a couple of questions about a couple of these.
Sure.
Okay. So, and I suppose what I'm thinking a little bit about is the possibility of, of, you know, a marina-type building, especially, you know, on the old Quality Yacht Yard, or...
Hold on.
Yeah.
The motion is to authorize advertising. If you wanna talk about, I just don't think talking about the specifics of it, get that motion.
Okay.
Right?
So should we, should we have that discussion first before we agree to advertise?
You should.
Please. Have we, have we already, haven't we already adopted, haven't we already made a motion to adopt these standards?
No.
We have not done that yet, okay.
That would be a public hearing.
Right, because that would, exactly, we, we can't do that until after we've had the public hearing.
Right, but you can have a discussion.
Okay, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a recommendation that when we, when we see something that we have an issue about, that we not just tell, tell the board what the problem is, but also recommend a solution to the problem, so that we move forward and we don't go around and around and around with issues. So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna challenge Tricia to come up with the solution to the problem that she spotted.
I'll bet she will. First, I need her to withdraw her second, and you to withdraw your motion for advertising.
Do my second.
Okay, okay. So what we're doing now is, is we are looking at the draft.
Yes.
It's only a draft, it hasn't been adopted. The draft design standards, and Tricia is gonna make one or more recommendations to amend this draft.
Or just have my question answered.
Okay.
So... So I'm with you, Stu. I don't want to see terrible, you know, metal buildings. But I'm also thinking, you know, if somebody's going to do a marina building on the Quality Yacht Yard, right, the chances of them putting up a wood building there are probably pretty slim. So is there room in here in a situation like this, and in part, this is a question for Todd, for the planning board to say that we could, you know, we could approve that? I mean, if you go to a marina today and you look and see what the type of buildings you're going to see at a modern marina today, that's what you're going to see. I mean, you can try and ask them to have it look aesthetically pleasing and to put some fenestration in it and, you know, have a nice color. But I just don't want to be in certain specific uses. I don't want to be business-unfriendly and have somebody not want to redo the Quality Yacht Yard because they don't want to put up a wooden building. That's, so that's my question.
Right, right. And the former Brewers Marina, which is in the hummock section of North Portsmouth, built within the last four or five years, built several very large metal-frame buildings to store boats that actually have their masts up. They can actually put sailboats with masts in that building. And you can see that from Evans Avenue quite clearly and from other parts of Tiverton. And this was done under the very regulations that I'm proposing tonight. So yes, you can do that.
So if we had an applicant that had a business use...
So if somebody buys Humphreys Wharf and wants to put up a building like that to store masted sailboats...
Well, that's got to be higher than our height limit. That's got to be above 35 feet, right?
Well, it was, we can grant a dimensional variance for that, but...
So that was my question. I just wanted to make sure that we wouldn't be prohibiting
Yeah, no.
potentially redevelopment of that based on the standard.
No.
To that point, I have a question as I'm looking through. Because it says in a couple of different places that metal is strongly discouraged, meaning that it's not prohibited.
Yeah.
But then when you get to, there's no page...
Building materials.
Page number. Building Materials Standards and Guidelines, they list the materials that can be used and metal's not there. So does that effectively prohibit it?
It's one interpretation.
Well, I'm concerned that it says it's discouraged, but then it's not listed as an allowed material. I think we have to reconcile that.
Well, let's add it to the list of permitted materials. Because we still have the discretion to, you know, to make that building look a little nicer with the proper design.
Well, I would even say, consider how you've done it in here already, where it doesn't just list the material, but it speaks to how that material is used. So you could list metal as an accent material or only as a structural material when it's properly, you know, disguised in a traditional New England style or something. And that could just be a facade. It wouldn't mean that they'd have to do all four sides of a large metal building. They could just do a front facade that made it, you know, look acceptable from the street. There are ways to do that. Highland builders is an excellent example of how you can use a metal building with a facade that doesn't look metal.
Right. Or could you put something where, you know, metal may be allowed where, I don't know how you say this, where, I don't know how to say this, where it's logically related to the use. In other words, if you're going to build a marina and you're going to have a, you know, you're going to have a 20,000-foot storage, you know, marina storage facility. And we want somebody to do something about the Quality Yacht Yard, right? Then, you know, and that's the sort of thing where the facade thing wouldn't necessarily work because it's basically exposed on all four sides, right? So it would look weird to have the front of it, have a facade.
Could we still put that in here?
Is there some language that would...
I am certainly open to language such as Ashley has suggested. I'm not prepared to draft that language tonight.
It's okay. Todd did it.
I suggest that we give staff the authority and discretion to make any further changes in this draft Architectural Design Standards for WII as part of our motion to also authorize a public hearing. Because I don't think, you know, I don't want to get into a drafting session tonight.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So, I mean, I think we should do the drafting session in the office during business hours. So if Ashley would like to take a stab at it or Ashley would like to ask me or Tricia, maybe Ashley can take a stab at it and run it by Tricia and myself. And then she can incorporate that into the draft before we get to, you know, before we get to our public hearing. And then the public hearing.
Watch your head. The bells are going to come down.
I stopped it. I don't think it's going to go over.
It does. It goes over the wreath. It does not go over the bells.
Right.
We learned that last night. Last night it was over the wreath and the bells had been taken off. It worked last night.
Okay, I'll let somebody else do it.
I might not be tall enough. It's a twist tie.
Yeah.
It's literally tied.
So while this is going on...
I may have somewhat acceptable language for it.
I'm not tall enough. My tippy toes are struggling.
That one's fine.
There's a knot right in the, no, lower, right there. That knot needs, if you undo that, it'll come off.
You did a good job last night.
I didn't do it.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
It came down, when we put the screen down, the bells just went, and then all of a sudden just left.
But our luck is if we tried out this screen, it won't end up.
It's fine.
We'll have a hole in the screen with the bells sticking out. That'll be what we'll have to do.
Okay, so let's, so let's get back to business here. And Todd, Todd has actually come up with some language that he thinks we might like.
They might be close. Building materials includes metal. Metal, however, is discouraged unless designed to appear like a traditional Southern New England waterfront building and only permitted where specified in this regulation. And I said that because above we have...
I think that's generic enough that it gives you the ability to consider it and make a decision about whether or not it's appropriate.
So we just decide whether or not it's Southern New England-looking enough?
Yeah, whatever that means.
Okay. I'm okay. I just didn't want to prohibit in certain instances that use. So, and a little bit, and I don't know enough about this to know if this is an issue. This prohibits prefabricated things. Are all prefabricated things horrible?
No, it doesn't. It says prefabricated and/or modular metal buildings are highly discouraged.
Okay. Fences. There's a section in here that says, facades? No, facades. It's the one about that. Where am I looking at this? Facades and fenestration. There's a section in here that says something about fences.
Is it fences or fenestration? It's right above the building materials standards at the end of page 3.
Page 3.
Facades and fenestration. It's right above building materials. So it's section 33.
Yeah. I understand that some uses might need to have a chain-link fence for security. But when I look at Main Road now and I look at the chain-link fence that's all along there, is it possible to put something in here about a more decorative fence as opposed to chain-link?
Chain-link is discouraged.
That chain-link is discouraged unless necessary for security and a decorative fence on the street-facing side would be...
I think you can require decorative fencing in, like, obviously visible locations and allow chain-link fence, you know, behind the building or to the side of the building if it's screened from view of the street. I think you can put language in there like that so that you can allow for that type of fencing for specific circumstances, again, probably like security, but require the decorative fencing where it's highly visible.
And that, I just, that would be my recommendation.
And I would suggest that you draft something and then send it to Ashley and she can incorporate it.
Well, I mean, I'm keeping track here as well. I can take a look at it and offer something and send it to you if you think it looks good.
Well, I mean, it's kind of up to the board. I'm just, that's just one thing that the chain-link fence on Main Road along the waterfront always kind of is like, oh, I wish that wasn't chain-link.
But, you know, when we're doing any kind of generic standards, you can't always anticipate every single situation that may occur in the next 10 years. And so I think we want to be flexible enough so that we can have a dialogue with the applicant and say, now that, you know, let's not do that in a highly visible place. Let's substitute something else and just work these things out. So what we're trying to do with design standards is not anticipate every single instance that will come up in the next 10 years with a solution. What we're trying to do is give the planning board a little more authority and a little more leverage to have the kind of discussion with the applicant that we had earlier today with an applicant, where there's give and take and goodwill. And, you know, so I'm not, you know, I don't think we need to split hairs. But having said that, if you share your language with Ashley or if Ashley thinks she understands enough to actually come up with it...
I'm happy to withdraw it.
No, 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 no.
I'm happy to withdraw it.
So, but I would like to make a motion then that a staff amended draft of Architectural Design Standards for Waterfront II Zone is authorized for advertising for a public hearing with the staff having discretion to decide when to put it on the agenda, keeping in mind that we might want to add other amendments to the subdivision regulations at the, you know, for the same hearing in order to save advertising costs. So that would be my motion.
I was thinking of the Item C for the same thing for all non-WII.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten to...
Well, no, I'm just saying if we're going to, if we're really talking about scheduling a public hearing.
Have them together.
We...
Would you want to do it together?
That's a good point, Dick. Dick is simply saying that we're talking about architectural standards
for other commercial-type districts, like general commercial.
And we might want to have those all together at the same time.
I want to second the motion so that we can just discussion. I have one question.
Yes.
Did you have any other points of feedback?
No, I'm not. I'm withdrawing them. I'm...
No, 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 you...
I'm good. I'm good.
So are we doing it at the public hearing?
No.
You're good. It's a public hearing. So Bill?
Well, I seconded the motion, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on this?
To this point, should we vote on B and C together?
No, no.
Should we make them at the same time?
No.
This is just a motion to let staff advertise at a time-appropriate Waterfront II design standards.
Those in favor? I'm calling the question. I think it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item, which is closely related. And that item is simply Architectural Standards for commercial zones other than WII. And so here's where we are. I'm just going to give you a progress report on where we are. And then I'm going to ask Ashley and Todd how they'd like to proceed with this. So with regard to the three Form-Based Code zones, assumed to be two Form-Based Code zones, we agreed on October 18 at our special meeting on how to handle architectural standards. And Ashley agreed that in due course, her staff will be providing a draft text. And that text will not only involve architectural, but also dimensional, as well as definition and name and et cetera, all of the things we discussed October 18. So that's where we stand there. And so we're waiting on Ashley to come up with sort of a, sort of a... Well, I think Ashley used the term "menu" of all of the different design standards taken from the three different sub-zones of the Form-Based Code. So that's where we stand with the Form-Based Code. General Commercial, I think that we can use, basically use the Waterfront II Zone, but modify that to remove any standards that pertain only to waterfront development. And I would be happy to work on that. And come up with a draft based on what we have already done for Waterfront II. Because Waterfront II and Commercial, I think, are basically, you know, basically the same principles, you know. Now, that brings us to Industrial. What about the Industrial Zone? Should we even have design standards? We actually have design standards for the Business Park, which we also call the Planned Development Park, which is an overlay district. And here they are. And we've had three buildings built in the park using these standards. Longplex, very nicely-designed building. Metal, but nicely-designed. Advantage Self-Storage, nicely-designed metal. And, but also a big metal warehouse-type building for Bill's Firewood Sales. We allowed Bill to go ahead and build something much more industrial-looking and much, you know, you know, just a drab industrial-style warehouse, large warehouse, because it's not visible from any place except the power plant. It's way back at the tail end of the industrial park or the business park, whatever you want to call it. So if we want to proceed with standards for the Industrial Zone as a whole, I think we can start here. And if you haven't seen this, I'm sure that I will be happy to get you a copy or send you an electronic copy. you an electronic copy. So that's what I would recommend with respect to industrial. And, but that leaves a couple of other things. Highway commercial. I would say highway commercial could be pretty much the same as industrial. You know, because highway commercial are larger buildings typically and they're, and they're, you know, they would, they would not be, they do not have to have that quaint, historic, you know, traditional New England look because they're more utilitarian, they're servicing the highway. And we only have one highway commercial district, by the way, at least at the present. At least we're hoping we will only have one highway commercial district at the end of the day. And that's, and that is up at the casino. That is up on, on Canning Boulevard in an area that has a lot of industrial style buildings already because it's an area where the Fall River border and the Tiverton border come together. So I think industrial, I think these industrial standards for the industrial park would, would also work in highway commercial and would give any developer plenty of flexibility. And then that still leaves one little commercial zone that we haven't even talked about yet. And that is Village Commercial. So what do we do with Village Commercial? And I'm glad we still have Susan Anderson here because I'm going to suggest that the Village Commercial Zone, which is very small, by the way, it does not cover all of the Tiverton Four Corners Historic District. It, it only covers about a third of that district, right in the neighborhood of where the, where the Four Corners are, around Gray's Ice Cream and around.
Five hundred feet from the center.
And around Groundswell. And I'm going to suggest that we adopt for, for architectural design standards for that Village Commercial section zone, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, together with the Guidelines for Preserving, Rehabilitating, Restoring and Reconstructing Historic Buildings. And those two documents are, are combined by the Department of the Interior National Park Service into a single package and it's about 220 pages. But a lot of the pages are just pictures showing what this, what is preferred and what is not preferred. And again, there's flexibility in these standards and it's something that is used in historic district zoning. We don't have any historic district zoning in the town of Tiverton. We should, I think personally, but we don't. But nevertheless, these standards are used not just for historic district zones, they're also used for anybody who gets a grant from the federal government for historic preservation or, or to rehabilitate anything that the federal government considers historic. So I, I think that those, that would be where we would go for. Now, we're not quite there yet. I'm just giving a little bit of background on how we can approach architectural design standards for other commercial districts. But I think we really need to have them because if we don't have some kind of design standards, we're going to get ugly, ugly and ugly. And we can't stop that. So, so how would, how would Ashley and Todd like to proceed with this? I think we're already, we're, we're going to be getting something for the, for the form based code area, which is going to be not only probably the architectural standards could not only apply to Main Road, they could also apply to the pedestrian friendly district that is being proposed, being proposed around Bliss Four Corners, correct? Is that what we're?
Yes.
So, and that's being proposed actually, it hasn't even come before us yet at the planning board, but it's being proposed by the zoning revision committee. So, so that's in the works. But, so, so Todd and Ashley, do you think that my approach makes sense or would you like to think about it and come up with some modifications or some new approaches? And by the way, I'm willing to put some volunteer work into actually doing some research and, and finding examples and putting stuff together that makes sense, you know, modifying stuff to make it fit Tiverton. So I'm not, I'm not pushing any specific agenda here. But I, but I, but I would like to get a sense of whether everybody on the planning board agrees that we need architectural design standards in all of our commercial zones.
I'd like to say something. Thank you for the synopsis of the October 18 meeting, which I was absent from and I saw nothing about the form base and what happened on Main Road. And the minutes do not show anything about it. It was not recorded, video wasn't here, audio wasn't here, no one had a tape recorder.
No, this, this all, this all happened.
You said it was the 18th.
It was, it was October, it was October 18 and I, I actually, I actually watched it. I actually watched the YouTube.
I was told it wasn't recorded.
There was, there was one meeting that was not recorded.
I believe it was the 18th.
Our discussion, our lengthy discussion about, about, remember Ashley had sent us a memo months ago saying, I need guidance. I need guidance about what you're going to do about the three, you know, you know, the three subzones within the form based code, traditional Main Street neighborhood business and, and pedestrian friendly destination. And do you, you know, and with respect to both architectural standards and dimensional regulations. And so we had a long, I mean, it was like an hour and a half discussion.
There's nothing in the minutes.
There's not, the minutes, the minutes, the minutes said nothing about it, basically.
And it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, it was on the agenda and it was.
It was only on the agenda.
Was it?
Yeah.
There's no notation.
I spotted it on the agenda and then I went to YouTube. That was just today. And, and that was quite a lengthy discussion and we made a lot of modif. That was when Bill Gerlach came up with artificial intelligence definition.
The infamous chat GPT event.
It gave a really good name.
Why would we be actually, I was supposed to be using this new district name?
It gave a really good definition as well as a name. And so we, we went around and around, but we did make progress and we did come to conclusions at the very end of the day.
And as a result of that, I have a 13 page draft of incorporating the form based code into your regulations, the way that you agreed to do it on, at that meeting. What I would like to do, because the draft that is in front of the board tonight is the same section as the draft that we put, obviously we're putting it in the same place. I think they belong there, but I think what we'll need to do is I'd like to structure it so that we have the, it's all, it's kind of laid out in terms of what we're going to cover in this section. So I would, I would propose to take the draft that's in front of you for waterfront two, combine it with this draft that's for the form, the form based code districts that, that we agreed on and then also set up space within that structure for general commercial, highway, commercial, industrial. And then as that language comes, we can plug it in and you'll have a whole draft of every district. It'll be in your subdivision regulations, all in the same place. You can look at it all at once so that you can compare and contrast what's going on in each district in the same document and then you can adopt that as one piece.
Are we being too strict or are we being too lean in, district by district?
Right. And so I, we will take our form based code draft, we will take the draft that Todd pulled together, we'll make that into one document, we'll set up space for the other districts. And as we pull things in, we'll plug them into that and you'll be able to see it all in one place. And then I would say that is what you take to public hearing.
Okay. Okay, I, I would, I, we take, we take it all as a hu, as a big package to public hearing.
Your whole set of design standards for every district in town.
For every, for every commercial district in town. Remember, we're not doing design standards for residential. So, so I, I think that's a terrific idea. But keep in, keep in, keep in mind that this is something that we can't put off and off and off. We do need to get, you know, eventually we do need to get around to it because we are going to have people coming before us who want to build dreadful things.
So I think we can, I'm just looking back at what I was kind of writing for myself. We can certainly use the PDP standards and modify those for highway, commercial and industrial. Stu, you had said you would be happy to work on the general commercial. That would keep both of those moving at the same time and then we'll, we can pull it all together into one.
Oh, I, I will, I will give you, I will work on general commercial and coordinate with you.
Okay.
To take a little bit of the burden off.
Ashley, I think we need to move those PDP standards into the subdivision regulations.
The actual PDP.
Just like you are.
So we'll make space for that as well.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that could be verbatim.
I would just cut and paste it. And then everything will be in one place.
Should there be some reference to tie the PDP, which is in the zoning ordinance, into the subdivision, just to?
I believe there's already a reference to those design standards.
Is there a reference? I haven't looked at it in a long time. The article.
Do we need that question answered right here, right now?
I'm looking at the PDP in the zoning ordinance right now.
Section 19.
Yes.
Article four.
I, I couldn't find the PDP.
Article four, section 19.
Right.
Review procedure includes proposed land development projects within PDP shall be reviewed for their consistency with different zoning ordinance and the adopted development standards and guidelines for the specific PDP.
So they know where to find it.
And are subject to land development plan review under article 20. That's no longer good. There's enough and I don't think we want to inundate this planning, the town council with more zoning ordinance.
But just a reference to it, to point them where to go.
There could still be a zoning ordinance amendment. I'm suggesting you not touch that right now.
When, when you do?
Don't push on that right now, please.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not.
Understand.
There are bigger fish to fry and, and we don't want to overload circuits here. Okay. Okay, I think we have a plan. I think we have a plan to move ahead with these design standards and probably take them all up in a planning board, public hearing, all at the same time. And when we have, you know, when we have space on the agenda. Good. Okay. So if anybody has any questions or issues about that, feel free to contact me. I know this is a little controversial and I know I may be pushing the envelope a little here with design standards because the little town of Tiverton tends not to even think of these things. But I think, I think if we don't, we'll regret it. So that brings us to agenda item two. D, and I'd like to take D and E together because the town council met November 25, just before Thanksgiving, and they approved license renewal for Hometown Country View LLC, Doing Business As Country View Estates, the Hurst Lane Development. And they also approved license renewal for the Helger Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC. And that used to be called the Coelho Quarry, which was always licensed but never active, but now it is active. And that's on Crandall Road. So, but when they did that, when council approved those licenses, they did it on the condition that the planning board give its rec, a positive recommendation. So they've sort of got the cart before the horse. And that, and that happened because town council has gone to approving all of their licenses at the same meeting and they want to do 100% of their licenses in November. So we've got to readjust our schedule so that we get our recommendations to town council before they take up all of the license renewals in November. So I'm asking staff to re, to try to remember to put license renewals on our agenda for October 2025. In that way, we'll get our recommendation to town council and then the cart won't be before the horse anymore. So, so having said all of that, I'm going to make a motion. And Todd, do you want two motions or can I do both of these licenses in the same motion?
Excuse me, Stu. They, they approved it conditionally upon getting a recommendation from us. So somebody will have to go out there and take pictures and do what we've done in the past. So we have it for the file.
Ashley attempted, attempted to do that today.
So John and I were supposed to go today. John couldn't go. I did go. I went to Country View. I drove through. There, I, there's no visible violations or issues that I can see, but I'm not a code inspector, so I think John should look before you sign off. I think there was some issues raised with the clubhouse that I, I want to look into and make sure that those are resolved. And I did go to the quarry. It was later in the afternoon. The gate was shut and I, without a town vehicle or a town badge or something, decided not to, you know, push my luck and disappeared in the woods back there. So I will arrange with John and, and try to go another time with him.
Do you think we could hold off for another month?
You're recommending that we.
I can't give you a complete report at this time.
But if we put it on next.
I would, I would, if, yeah, if you want to wait for that, then I would, I would put it on next month and I, I will do everything I can with John to get out there.
Okay, so we'll.
It is active because I followed a dump truck down Crandall Road the other day.
So we would need a motion to continue.
Two motions, yes.
Okay, we'll do.
Because they're separate agenda items.
Okay, so I'll do, I'll do a motion to continue two D, which is the license renewal for Hometown Country View LLC, Doing Business As Country View Estates, to continue this to our January. to continue this to our January 6.
Seven, is that...
Seven.
January...
Seventh.
To the January meeting.
To the January regular monthly meeting.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Unanimous. I would make a, a second emotion to, um, continue the item two E, license renewal for Helger Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC, also known as Coelho Quarry, on 1764 Crandall Road. Continue that to our January regular monthly meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Steve. All of those in favor? Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll take that up in January. So that brings us to F, approval of planning board budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, where we are in the current, the current fiscal year, which is the 24, 25 year. We're about halfway through. It ends June 30th, 2025. And, um, let me see. I have some, I have some numbers that I got just yesterday. You, you will recall that a couple of meetings ago, we voted to move $2,000 out of the line item called, called Technical and Professional Services into the line item called, called Advertising Subdivision Regulation Advertising, because we were in arrears by about $150. That has happened, or it's in the process of happening. I checked yesterday, and, and Chris Cotta said he hadn't signed the paper yet, but he would get around to it. So he signed it yesterday, so that money has been transferred. So that leaves us with, with $1,839.42 in the advertising for subdivision regulations. So we're in pretty good shape there. And it leaves Technical and Professional Services at $6,753 in no sense. So we're in pretty good shape there for the rest of the year. But since, and I talked to Denise Surratt, the treasurer, and I talked to several people, several other people, including Ed, and everybody seems to agree that we probably need to ask town council for more money than we have traditionally asked for advertising because, as we just saw with the previous agenda item, we're going to be doing a lot of hearings to hear amendments to our subdivision regulations. We're going to have to, as we change zoning, then we have to change the subdivision regulations because the subdivision regulations implement the zoning. So, um, or, or clarify the zoning. So everybody seems to agree that doubling that number seems to be a good idea. So we'll go from our traditional request of $3,000 for advertising for subdivision regulation amendments to 6,000. So that's what I'm, I'm suggesting here. And I'm, I'm happy to put that on paper. I've always done that in the past. And, and do a memo to, to town council with justification for why we need that. They're asking, by the way, they're, they're twisting our arm to get our, to get our recommendations in. So that's one of our two line items. The other line item that the planning board has is professional, Technical and Professional Services. And as we, we had a discussion earlier tonight about, about hydrology and a hydrological engineer. We may, we may have other, um, we have, we may need to hire other people. We have already spent some money on Scott Millar, who came in and did a workshop on, on conservation development. Scott charged hardly anything for that, by the way. That was the best bargain in town. But, but, you know, other consultants may charge more. So I don't know if you think that our traditional request has always been 10,000 a year for that. I kind of hate to ask town council to give us more if we haven't actually spent the amount of money we have already because they're going to say, hey, look, you, you know, we, you know, you haven't spent the 10 we gave you last year. We're not going to give you more for the coming year. So I, my inclination is to double the, double the advertising budget, but keep Technical and Professional Services at the $10,000 level until we know that, you know, that we really need it. Tricia may have a different perspective on that. But I, I, I'm, I, I don't, I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to ask more than we need. I want to be very cautious and conservative in, in requesting budgeting. So what are the rest of you feel? Six, 6,000 for advertising and 10,000 for Technical and Professional? Or should we go higher with Technical and Professional? You know, maybe Ashley and Todd have a better feeling for this than I do.
My only concern is hiring you or I or whomever to do the hydrology. Whether that's going to be a separate item or from this line item. Right.
The other thing is, you know, we had a moratorium for six months of the year this year. So we didn't have...
We didn't have our normal volume and... So the fact that we have around six grand left over in Technical and Professional could be skewed by the fact that we've had the moratorium.
Historically?
Not the year before.
No, no, we, historically, we have, we have, we have rarely dipped into that budget simply because we weren't doing our job as planners, you know? We defer the planning because we're so overwhelmed by the applications that we never get around to, you know, hiring experts to, to give ourselves more tools in our tool chest of, of guiding development based on the comprehensive plan.
What did we pay for the LID study out of?
The what study?
The Low and Park development.
The LID study came out of Technical and Professional Services, but I think we paid for that last year.
Oh, right, after, before, before June, that's why.
Yeah, that was, that was, that, that, I, I think the la- we paid, we made two separate payments, and, and the last payment came out just before the end of the fiscal year.
Tricia, when do you think you'll have the proposal from you or I?
That's what I was going to ask next, if it's possible to...
Well, LID, we'll have it, you know, they said probably by the end of next week we'll have it.
If, if, if I could refer to that, then that would give me a justification for asking for more.
If you knew how much that was going to cost, and then you could justify asking for that in addition to what you would usually have available, then you could ask for more with a specific purpose. But I, I have no idea what something like that costs.
I don't, I don't want to overcomplicate this, and this conversation, and that's a fine plan. But I think the next time we go around, maybe a year from now, and have this conversation, I personally would find it incredibly helpful to have not only an artifact that outlines budget, actuals, and expenditures for the current fiscal year, but maybe for the previous two, right? So we have three years' worth of data in which to... And again, we're not spending a lot of money, but I do think having that information, and Stu, I completely trust you and your memory on this. But I think as a matter of just due diligence and just best practice, it would be helpful to have that sort of data in front of us. So, for next go-round.
Right, but we have very limited staff services.
But even a report, I mean, there must be a report out of a cost center or something like that. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not asking anyone to do any, like, decide, run a report.
I would imagine there's a sheet in the full budget that said that it's easier to get from the treasurer's office, so maybe we just need something to think of.
I'm just saying, in the future.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, Bill, but, but you're, 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 you're assuming that we're a sophisticated, well-run...
So I'm going to make a recommendation. I'm going to work with Ed. I'm going to get the three, I'm going to make it a Google Doc. Can I make it a Google Doc and share it, and then we'll just add to it every year? And then, is that not allowed?
No. Open meetings, concerns there.
Well, can I do it and have it ready for next year?
Of course.
Okay, so done. Easy peasy.
Okay, that's fine. Good, thank you.
You can share it with Ed.
Yeah, I'll share it with him.
We can distribute it.
Can I ask a, a question about the budget? Do you, are you guys the ones that ask the council for money for the comp plan? Or is that, like, how does that happen?
Well, that money was taken out of, out of federal grant money that came down to the state and then down to the town of Tiverton. So the, uh, oh, oh, you're talking about the comp plan.
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan, yeah. When we did that, when we did that back in 16, 17, it was finalized in 18, but it took us 18 months or so to put it together, almost two years. That money, uh, that money came from town council's contingency fund. And because we did a couple of charats, we did a couple of public meetings, and so there was some cost to that, and, you know, coffee and donuts.
Were you hired a consultant too?
We hired a consultant, and we had to pay for mapping services.
Right.
And ma- and mapping services, and then actually putting, putting the document together. So, you know, so there, but I think that all came out, and Tricia, you would, you were probably town council president when that was done. No, that was before you became president, I think.
The only reason I'm asking is that I would, I know it seems like far away, but reality is, is that you'll have to start this process in about a year and a half, two years, because your plan is good till 2028. My experience is that if you ask them to tuck away a certain amount of money each year, that it's, you're not coming in one whack for a huge sum. It's easier to digest. I'm just offering it as a suggestion that you might want to ask the council to put aside money now, starting now, you know, for the next couple of budget cycles.
But then they would have to encumber that funding.
No, you put it in a restricted account.
Restricted account. And whoever prepares the budget for the town could request it.
Okay, so it, it looks like we're...
I'm just offering it as a suggestion based on, you know, experience, that it's much easier to ask them to put away small pieces or smaller pieces than it is to come at them for 150 grand at once.
It's a good suggestion.
I, I will say, we, when I was the planner in Charlestown, we had a restricted planning fund, and every year, the planning board asked for 10 grand, and it went into that account. And it didn't get used for a very long time, but when they needed it, they had like $160,000 and were able to do the comp plan, write a wind ordinance. Like, they just were able to get a couple of things done that they needed to because they had been tucking away a little sum of money every year for planning purposes.
That's prudent.
It is prudent.
So I would, I would, I would suggest maybe 3,000 dollars. Does that seem reasonable?
How much did it cost the last go-round? Anybody, no, 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 I'm sorry, I'm just sort of looking in that general area.
Budget.
You just said 150K. Is that real? Is that about...
That's a real number.
That's about the go- going rate. And you said this is the next time we have to have it approved is 2028 or 2029?
Your plan expires in 2028.
So we need to get going in a couple of years.
It takes a minimum of 12 months to get a plan done.
So in understanding that that's probably going to, that 150 may go up 2% to 5%, just based on inflation.
I'm not sure why, since this, all of the speaker's new laws completely trample all over our comprehensive plan, why we still have to do this. I, seriously, like, it, it's...
I'm sure the speaker would love to do all his zoning and planning for you.
I'm sure he would.
In every community.
So, so would he like to do our comprehensive plan too? Because essentially, you know, I mean, they've taken all the teeth out of it, right? I mean, it, now it's just a giant pile of administrative work that, you know...
I'd recommend more than 3,000 to put in the restricted. I'd recommend 10 if we have to because if this has to be done by 2028, then we have to start it very sooner than that. So I'm, at the very least, 10. And understanding kind of taxes were slightly increased, but roll it down, is down in school until some of the, some of these developments are done, there's potentially a little bit more squish. So if we can get it now versus in 2028, where a lot of those developments will be done, but there's kids in school, it might be less of a, a burden. That would be my recommendation. And they can say no. I say, shoot for the, actually, shoot for the stars, man, but you know what I mean? It's the technical aspect of it.
So we're, we are really not prepared to make a budget recommendation tonight. A, a lot of issues have come up. We would want to wait for Tricia to get an estimate for URI, for the hydrology. We want to think, think about, and I think you're right, probably, but we want to think about if we ask for 10,000, are we asking too much from a to- a brand-new town council that maybe doesn't have the institutional memory that some of us have on the importance of some of these things? And, uh...
That could work the other way, though, too.
Yeah.
So I guess I might ask...
So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just...
I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to go before the council and defend the budget.
You'll have to go before the budget committee first.
If we, if we get, if we get an estimate from the URI folks, and then keep in mind, this year, we're getting more bills from the speaker. There are going to be more that are going to get passed. So we may need some more help with some of those. I will say this. I think not all, for some counselors, zoning and planning is going to be new. I think that, I think that last year, um, there was some play in the budget. I think that this year, there's going to be a whole lot less from a town perspective.
Yeah, because, because all of, all of that federal largesse that came out of, that came out of the, the COVID is drying up now.
And I think there was...
And it's not going to come back under the new administration.
And I think there were some funds that were found that went towards school to help keep Fort Barton open, but they're not necessarily going to be available this year. So I don't think we should ask for too much. And I think the comp plan is something we're going to have to in- just even introduce as a concept and why we need to do it. And, um, so I don't know, I don't know if we should ask for three different buckets or for this year, we're just better off asking for our advertising budget and, you know, and technical help? And because I...
I completely agree with that. But we can put in the letter to town council, please keep in mind that we will be requiring, we are required by the state to come up with, to come up with a new comprehensive or, or revision or update of the comprehensive community plan.
Not an update. It's not an update. I just went through this with statewide planning. The term "update" is a holdover from the original legislation when it used to be a five-year cycle. They didn't remove the word "update", and it has caused confusion at the local level where municipalities are going out to bid for updates. Not an update. It's a full rebrand. It's a whole new plan. And now it's on a 10-year cycle. So your obligation hasn't really changed. Just the method in which they do it changed, but the term "update" is a misnomer. It's not an update. It's a whole plan.
Okay, that's, that's fine, but we could, we can, using the correct language, we can, you know, warn town council that this big expense is coming up in the future. We're not asking money for it right now. We're not asking money for it right now, but we're just warning them, because I, because I think.
If they knew about it, that's even one of those things where frankly, you know, because it's required by the state and it's once every ten years, if we give them enough heads up, that might be even something that they say, we're gonna fund part of this with casino funds, because this is essentially, from a, from a planning perspective, it's a required capital investment. So I think just letting them know that it's coming would be a really good start, and then.
Okay, okay, we could, we could do that.
From your perspective, we have to have it done by 2028. Do we, like, and I'm just thinking, because I think this would be important to show the Town Council, do, do we start that process, like, eighteen months or two years? Okay, so we'll need that approved, and is it December twenty twenty?
I don't remember the month, but I bet Stuart Rosemary does. The month that it was approved in twenty eighteen. It should have it on the front cover.
It, it was, it was, it was July twenty eighteen, I believe.
So that's, that's your ten-year date.
July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, adopted by the Town Council.
The state approval date.
That was two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, eighteen by Town Council, but when did the state approve it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, the same, the same year?
So with that being said, though, we need to start the process in January of twenty twenty-seven, in essence, to finish it by July of twenty twenty-eight.
Yes.
And maybe even a little earlier. So we're probably starting to, like, kick rock, or, you know, kick tires on things late twenty twenty-six.
I, I would, yeah, I mean, you might recommend, you might, you might outline that timeline for them, so they're aware when this is coming.
Yeah.
Like, that, that you can't wait until twenty twenty-eight. That's when it actually expires.
Ed, I don't know if you do this, but does Treasury, like, could Treasury give us ten years of expenditure data? Because then we'll have ten, what it costs ten years ago. So when I pull those numbers, I'll pull as far back, at least ten years.
So, so how does staff recommend that we handle this request for a budget recommendation for the upcoming fiscal year? We do have a little time flexibility. We decided to start early this year. Um, I don't think we'll really be pushed until January. Should we continue this item, um, to our January meeting? Um, with the understanding that we will have a letter, um, for you to actually approve, a draft letter for you to actually approve at the January meeting. That's what we did last year. Um, I drafted the letter, but you approved it. Um, and so that would be in your backup material for the January meeting. And by then, we'll have, we'll have the URI estimate, and we may have a slightly better idea of some other items. But basically, we're talking about just keeping the two-line items. Um, um, and, uh, certainly asking a double amount for the advertising, and then also putting in the letter, um, language that will inform Town Council that we've got this big expenditure coming up called the Comprehensive Community Plan.
The date is November fourth, twenty twenty-eight, is your expiration date.
So, so is that, is that when Town Council approved, or is that when statewide planning approved?
Statewide planning approved it November fifth of twenty eighteen. The town approved it October twenty-second of twenty eighteen.
So it sounds like when the state.
What is, what is, what is the ten-year period? Is it the town?
It's the ta- no, it's the state.
It's the state, okay. So I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I have that date proper.
I'll send you this.
No, no, you don't have to. I've, I've got it. I've got the comp plan right on my desk. I refer to it every day. It's my bible.
Who has to pay to codify all those changes we've been making, that we've been writing? Where does that money come from?
Zoning and subdivision? The town?
They, that doesn't come out of our budget, no.
No, it comes, it's the town, the general fund.
Town clerk.
Or the clerks, or wherever they put the money for codification.
So do we need, uh, do we need a motion to, to continue this item?
Just to continue it.
Just to continue it, okay. So I'll make a motion to, uh, to continue the, um, discussion, uh, and, uh, discussion and possible approval of, um, the letter, uh, to Town Council with our recommendation for a planning board budget for, uh, Tiverton fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six to our Janu- reg- January regular monthly meeting, whenever that is.
Seventh.
VA second from.
I didn't say anything.
I think it was Dick. I heard Dick say it.
I think, I think Dick was referring to the date of the January meeting, Steve Sackarden.
Okay, Steve. Hardy and Steve.
But we haven't approved that yet.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing no further dis- By the way, if you do have thoughts, please email me, and I'll gather your thoughts to, on this particular issue, okay? Unanimous.
No.
Yeah.
No, we don't.
You can't do that?
You're gonna end up with a walking quorum.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It's like, it's like.
If you have thoughts, you can send them to Ed.
It, it's like.
So Ed is the middleman. Everything goes to Ed.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, send it. If you have any thoughts, send them to Ed, and then Ed will inform me, so I can, um.
So we're not allowed to hang out outside with this.
Okay.
Not more than quorum.
Excuse us, Steve, I can understand.
I'm gonna walk the other way.
Okay, so the next one is an easy one. Approve, uh, this is two G, agenda item two, two G. Approval of the annual calendar and special meeting calendar for twenty twenty-five, and you have this in your backup packet, and basically, um, it's the first Tuesday for our regular monthly meeting of every month, unless there's a holiday, in which case it drops to the second Tuesday. Um, and then the, uh, backup day, dates are the third Tuesday. Did I get that right, Ed? Is that what you?
Yeah.
The basic principle. So this is what we've been doing for years now, so, um, I will make a motion, all those in favor of approving the, um.
Can we get a second?
We need a second from Steve?
I'll second.
Okay, VA seconded it, Hardy and VA. Um, well, uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, those in favor, unanimous. Thank you. I voted for you before you.
That was, that was for both of them?
That was, yes, that was.
Both the special calendar and the regular calendar.
Um, agenda item, so that we could do one motion for both of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, and then Ed has to get that to the town clerk, right? You're required to do that under the.
And the Secretary of State.
And the Secretary of State, blah, blah, blah. So, so that brings us to, here's an item that I asked to be put on the agenda. Um, and this is two H. Discussion and possible vote to recommend to Town Council to engage a qualified consultant to update the growth management and needs assessment for impact fee schedule and ordinance adopted July thirtieth, twenty, uh, two thousand and seven, um, and amended by Town Council November thirteen, two thousand and seven. So, um, uh, does everybody know what a development impact fee is? It's a fee that towns, including the town of Tiverton, charges to home builder. A home builder, uh, must pay that fee before a certificate of occupancy is issued for a new house that goes up in Tiverton. And that fee is designed to pay for the costs to town services that will be incurred by the people living in that new home. So, uh, what costs are we talking about? Kids in the public school system, it would be an example, fire, police, um, the senior service center, um, DPW services, um, et cetera, et cetera. So we, uh, uh, this fee was adopted by Town Council. It wasn't brought to Town Council by the planning board. It was brought to Town Council by a private individual. And the Town Council, um, agreed that, um, that the, uh, then the town solicitor, Andy Tites, um, would look into it, and Andy, uh, Andy decided that he needed a technical, a, 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 a technical, uh, advisor to help him with something called the needs assessment, because in order to put the fee together, you have to prove to the state that, um, that, uh, you need that money. You, you need that fee money. It can't be arbitrary. You just can't take a number out of the air. You'll have to tie that fee to actual costs. Um, and when they got into that, and, and Andy hired a friend of his who is a consultant, has done this before, um, they put it together. They decided that they would start out with just charging a fee to, to reimburse the town for the additional costs to educate kids living in those new houses. Um, so the fee is restricted to, um, tuition costs, um, or the cost of building a new school because, um, because of the school-age population. Um, a- and Town Council went along with that. Um, but they all, but, um, the fee assessment also said, um, that, uh, that the town would be reviewing this every several years um, to, uh, to, to add, you know, to adjust the fee and to possibly add other services to increase the fee. So we've got a fee, but it's very minimal. It doesn't raise much money, and it's tied entirely to the public schools and not to the other town services that are provided. So in order to, pardon?
What is the current fee outline about?
Um, it's like twelve hundred dollars, is it?
It's a one-time fee.
There's a formula that you use, and I don't know exactly what the fee is.
Um, John, John, John mentioned a few months ago, John Hoyle, who just actually collects the fee, um, that it's around twelve hundred dollars, and he said that's way below.
That's a very small fee.
That's a very small fee. Yeah.
Yeah, the fee is supposed to get recalculated regularly, and it's calculated off of, the, the funds have to be expended in, on a, on a capital improvement. You can't pay for not tangible items, so you can, like, put a new roof on a building. You can build a new structure, um, but you can't do things like pay for teachers or, you know, like I said, like, not, not tangible items.
That's right, and, and so, and so one of the problems we had at the time was not every department in Town Hall had a five-year capital improvement budget. The schools had it because they're required to do that under state law, but some of the other departments didn't even have that. I don't know if they do now or not. Um, but, um, uh, but, but Ashley is absolutely correct. It's tied actually to capital improvements, and that's why it's really hard to put it together. So we would, if we want to update this, and it's long overdue, and it's, but it's up to Town Council to make that decision, um, it's gonna cost some money. Now, it was paid for originally out of, out of the Town Council contingency fund. That was back when Claudia Lynn Harris was president of the Town Council. Um, I was, I was very actively involved in that process. Um, the planning board didn't pay for it. Um, so, uh, you know, I would, you know, I think probably just follow, you know, let Town Council figure out how they want to pay for it. But, but what I'm suggesting is that we bring it to the attention of Town Council, and that we ask Town Co- remind Town Council that they have such a thing. I don't think half the members of Town Council hardly even know that they have something called a, a development impact fee, and that it, and that it's long overdue for updating, and that if they do update it, it will cost them some money, but then they'll get a whole lot money, more money in fee revenue. Um, so I think that that is why I asked to, to put it on the agenda. And I don't know if we do that in a separate letter to Town Council, um.
And change it, so that it goes to other departments rather than schools.
They're just basically saying exactly.
Yes.
So this is.
So one, one person at a time, and he is talking.
Um, this is a one-time fee for brand-new builds, right? So if somebody's gonna buy a.
A one, a one-time. Oh, oh, this is, this is a one-time fee, and I, I might add that we, we have traditionally, um, waived the fee for low and moderate income. So, for example, when the buildings, um, at Chris Harkins, uh, Pecassett Reserve get built, the only people who will be paying fee are the people who are in the market-priced, um, units. The people who, uh, who buy into the low and moderate income units will not be paying the fee. They're, they are exempted.
So it's not paid, so that's a great question. So that's a, a good question. So it's not paid by the developer. It's when the developer sells those properties off to the, the first-time home buyer of the brand-new build.
It, it depends. It's, it's, it's at the time of building permit, so it's whoever's pulling the permit. So if the developer, if the developer is, if the developer is the one that's pulling permits, building houses and selling them, he's paying those impact fees so that people can live in the house that he's selling. If he's selling off lots, and you're buying a lot, and you're building the house, then you're paying the impact.
So it's the builder who actually pays the fee, whoever actually builds the building just before the, the certificate of occupancy is issued, and that's why, that's why John Hoyle and the building official manages this program.
I would recommend, if you're gonna ask the council to, I think there's two, two things going on. One is the impact fee and the needs assessment is supposed to be a dynamic document. It's supposed to be revisited.
It shall be every five years.
I know.
Is what the statute says. If you're going to assess the fee, it shall be done every five years.
So that needs to be done. The other piece of it that I'm hearing you talk about, that I think you want to be specific in your recommendation or request to them, is that in order to expand the current fee structure beyond the school, you have to, you need a new needs assessment, because that needs assessment has to incorporate the town's capital budgeting and what, may, you have to make that connection, because right now, that needs assessment is only connected to the school's capital budgeting. So even just updating what's there with new numbers and new information is gonna keep that fee tied to the schools. You have to do the new needs assessment that incorporates the town's capital budgeting in order to expand that fee and expand the formula to gain a larger fee.
But, but I think, I think that that should be a decision that Town Council makes. I, I wouldn't.
I'm just saying, you, you should be clear about that in your message to them, that there's two pieces here.
There are two, there are two pieces that you, Town Council, need to discuss.
Yes, yes.
Need to discuss, and by the way, if you need more information, we're always happy to provide it to you. Um, so we're, so we would simply be asking Town Council, reminding Town Council that they are already in arrears. I don't know how we do that politely, um, and that, uh, you know, and that it, it is long overdue to update and to also discuss expanding beyond schools into things like new fire trucks and, you know, a new police station and so on. Um, and that they would, and, and that the town will need a five-year capital improvement budget, um, and, and calling it to their attention and seeing if they take it up, you know, um, because it's, you know, it's not in our bailiwick necessarily. But if we don't do it, there's no, no one has taken ownership of this. No, no town, no, no town administrator, in my memory, has ever taken. No, no town, no, no town administrator, in my memory, has ever taken any kind of ownership of this, you know.
Is that only a one-time fee or is it?
It's a one-time fee. Brand-new house before you move in.
New construction.
Go ahead.
I have a question. If you have a vested plan already, are you not, would you not be subject to any increase in this? So, so what, a vested plan or completed plan, well, like where in the application process would you not be subject to any updated impact fee? You just go with the old one?
I think as soon, as soon as it's vested.
I mean, if it's vested, it's, the vesting speaks, speaks to zoning and subdivision. It doesn't speak to other town ordinances, does it? Like it doesn't vest you under the entire code? Or may, maybe it does. I don't know.
I mean, that's a really interesting question. Because we have a lot of things on the books.
Hundreds and hundreds of units that will pay the.
Certificate of occupancy, right? Is that really when it, because?
Right. But I don't know if you can tell someone after they've got an approved plan that, oh, by the way, we're, you know, the impact.
No, you can't.
Yeah.
I don't, but I don't know where, I don't know where in the process, where in the process that.
I mean, it seems the most logical would be just to tie it to vesting in general instead of creating a different type of vesting, but I'd leave that to the lawyer.
So that's an argument in favor of urgency. So how, how would you like to deal with this staff? Would you like to draft a letter or would you like me to draft a letter? This would be to town council. This would probably be, you know, you know, just, just calling their attention to the fact that this is, this is where the situation stands and, and see if they want to pick up the ball and run with it.
This is where I like take off one ear and put the other hat on and tell you that if you put out an RFP, I'm going to bid on it. So I probably shouldn't write your letter. But I'd be happy to look at it for technical information.
You have a new council coming in.
Yeah.
You need to be careful how much you're.
Putting in front of them.
Online, yeah.
Yeah, but this, but this is, this is good news for the council because this is how they can raise more money.
New council, new administrator.
Well, I think it depends though on, I think it depends on, you know, if this costs $60,000 or $75,000, then, you know, that's, that's a, that's a bite in potentially a bite budget. I, I think Todd's, you know, it's a new council. They're going to get the whole waterfront and the whole main, like, we're not starting them off with one little simple zoning thing. We are giving them this, right? Right out of the box.
I mean.
And we're going to ask for the increase in our, in our, in our budgetary needs. And we haven't even mentioned this, but, but, but they're going to have to sort out the whole actuals compensation plan or salary like thing that they have going too, right? So that's, that's a whole nother thing. I, I don't know if I would, I, I would maybe wait on that one and do that after they have their feet underneath them a little bit. Maybe, because it's kind of a lot, all, all in January, it's a lot.
I mean, you could, we could draft it and just hold it till, like, a year.
Right. And, and we, and we don't have, we have an interim town administrator now, Chief Jones, Pat Jones of the, of the police department. I could, I could send him a letter, but I'd want it approved by the planning board just to say, this is something, this is something you should be aware of.
I mean, why don't you draft a letter, Stu? We bring it back to the January meeting. That buys us another month, you know?
Because I, I, I hate to just put it off because we've been putting it off, you know, I, I'd like to raise, I'd like to raise the consciousness of this a little bit. Because if we don't do it, no one else will. You know, that, that's, that's, that's a proven fact, you know? It'll just be forgotten about. And so I hate to put things on the back burner.
But what if we, what if we try to target getting?
Draft a letter, bring it to you in January, if we have time to even consider it in January. And then we can decide where to go. But I don't think it would hurt to send it to the interim town administrator and say, you know, you know, here's an issue. So, okay, I'll do that. Okay. And I don't think we need to even have a vote on this, do we? We have a plan. Oh, okay. So this brings us to, I consider purchasing a planning board membership to the Rhode Island Chapter, the American Planning Association. And I, and I think that the price is right. Is $200 the figure I heard?
It's $100.
$100, $100 a year.
And clearly we have some, what do we take that out of? The technical?
So I'm going to make a motion that we do that.
A little more discussion on that.
Yeah, no, no, no. Roberts, Roberts rules of order. Let, let us, let us have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Okay, now we have a discussion. And I'd like to start the discussion by pointing out that the American Planning Association, Rhode Island Chapter, turns out an awful lot of good information that I would like to have access to. And in fact, they, their monthly newsletter has a, has a place where towns can actually advertise for staff. But I think you need to be a member of APA, Rhode Island Chapter, right?
You don't.
You don't? Okay.
I should be selling it to you by saying yes, but you don't. You can post, you can post jobs there for free.
But this is, but this is, but this is, this is, you know, information that I'd like to see, just to keep me aware of what's going on at the state level. And also, and also they run some interesting stuff. I think they work very closely with Grow Smart Rhode Island and, you know, and they have interesting, interesting information that I think would be an educational value for the planning board. So I'm all in favor of it, so.
Is everyone going to get a, a copy of this newsletter?
Can I, can I explain it?
Yeah.
And might answer your questions?
It's worth the $100, but yeah.
So this is the Rhode Island Chapter. There's a chapter for every state. It's a national organization. There is, we are offering, the Rhode Island Chapter is offering a planning board membership. $100 covers a membership for your entire planning board for the year. When you sign up for this membership, you provide them with a list of email addresses that you, where you all want to receive the information. There is a weekly newsletter that goes out every Monday. That will list jobs. It will list RFPs. It will also provide resources that, there's training seminars and webinars. We have partnerships with other chapter organizations to, you know, allow Rhode Island Chapter members to attend certain webinars and seminars. So whatever's listed on that weekly email, you would have access to that information. So if it was a topic you wanted to learn more about, you could join the session. We also have a legislative committee that gets relatively active. We have a really large membership to that legislative committee, but only a small handful of people who actually do, do any, do work. So we're always looking for volunteers and would be happy to take planning board members that have an interest in legislation. We have, the planning board chair in South Kingstown is working to try to pull together like a, a planning board group so that there's better communication between planning boards across the state, that we can collaborate, work more closely together. So if we would bring, the, the membership would kind of bring all of that to you in an email and you would have access to, to all of that. And we also often do work with, with Grow Smart and other organizations. So if there are other trainings available or workshops or, like, Grow Smart is doing a Main Street program right now. So we, we post all of that information. So you're not just getting the planning stuff, but you're getting other events and things that are planning related. And so that's what your $100 buys you for the year.
Okay, any further discussion? So I think I need a motion to authorize, authorize.
Did you want to make a motion to go into discussion?
We did.
The discussion was under the motion.
So we just need to vote?
Oh, okay. So all of those in favor?
So I'll ask you to, if you want a different email other than what Ed already has, that you want this newsletter to go to, let us know. If not, Ed will contact them, sign you all up, give, give them the emails and you'll get added to the list.
Super.
Does statewide planning interface with them?
Um, yes, yes. Current, the current, so I am the former, I am the immediate past president. The current president is the Assistant Director of Statewide Planning. And the upcoming president is my coworker at Weston and Sampson. But we do work with statewide planning all the time and collaborate, as well as we are an affiliate member of the League of Cities and Towns. So we work with them all the time.
Is Nancy Hess the?
Nancy Hess is at statewide planning.
Is she on?
I mean, she's, she's a chapter member, yes.
She did an excellent job with the Rhode Island lots on a couple Saturdays ago. Very good.
So the next item on the agenda is to Jay, approval of minutes, November 12, 2024. Did anybody, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Is that moved?
This was in your backup package?
Discussion.
Well, let's, let's have a motion in a second and then we'll have a discussion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2024.
Do we have a second and then we'll have a discussion to see if there's anything? Okay, we have a second. Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Page one. The, right after the first item. Ms. Sweet then went over the proposed future land use map. Was that correct? My computer went down. The first paragraph.
So what, what is?
Proposed. Insert proposed future land use map.
Oh, okay. Did you get that, Ed?
I have the word proposed. Proposed, okay.
And my notes show that the last lady on that page was Deborah Murphy proposing of 153 Riverside Drive. Maybe I'm, I couldn't double check it today.
153 was the property she was talking about, but she lives on Deer Run.
Yeah.
Her address is Deer Run, but she also owns the property of.
She said 153 Riverside.
That, that's the property she was referring to, but she does not live there.
Right. Okay.
So she lives in Deer Run, but she owns that piece of property at 153.
It's not verbatim.
She wrote it down.
Okay.
On the sheet.
On the sheet, yeah.
Fine. Okay. The second page, please insert. I had, Ms. Eva said that she had concerns, insert, over Nanaquaket Pond and three parcels south of Bogomash Road that are presently, that are pre-existing non-conforming parcels. Ms. Eva said she felt these parcels being changed to waterfront didn't fit the comprehensive community plan and read from chapter five, land use, page 50, waterfront-related uses. And there is no water or sewage in the current zone which is residential.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to need to send that change to Ed.
I'm sorry?
You need to send that one to Ed, please.
I will. Page three. I have a clarification. On the 123, third paragraph, Mr. Hardy made a motion to make a positive recommendation to the Tiverton Town Council and to adopt the amended amendments depicted on the on proposed zoning map or land use map. I don't know what, what it was, Stu, and I couldn't check it.
What does it read?
Doesn't make sense, Todd.
It, it's just a typo. So, so Ed, in, in that paragraph, it says on the on. So it should say on the proposed.
But was it the proposed zoning map or the land use map?
It was the zoning map.
I thought it was.
I don't know which section. I don't have it in front of me, Rosemary, but I assume.
I thought you had everything there.
I assume that because you're on page three.
Yes.
We're down to the zoning map at this point.
Okay.
So just take out the words and on, yeah. Anything else, Rosemary?
Yes, I have a couple here. Page five. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. On the, almost to the end of, Mr. Hardy made a motion to approve the positive findings in apostrophe S, Ms. Sweet's memo for Unified Development Review. And then in the next paragraph, you made a positive findings. I just.
Where are you wanting apostrophes, Rosemary?
I'm sorry.
We need to possess it.
Page five.
You said something that wasn't in there. She said something about unified, but I'm reading this unless there's.
It's in the, it's in the second paragraph. It says Ms. Sweet's memo. Sweet needs an apostrophe S.
Thank you.
Ashley's last name is not Sweets. It is Sweet.
Okay.
I could just change it. That would be easier.
You could change your name, that'd be easier.
I'll fix it on the next slide. If it's grammatical, can it just get made without having to be read? Can we just?
The next paragraph.
Grammatical changes?
Mr. Hardy made a motion.
But can't she just submit grammatical changes and everyone can agree on it? I mean, it's, it's 9:37 and we're talking about apostrophes.
Yeah.
Just if everyone is in agreement that Rosemary's grammatical edits can be accepted, then we could just, she can just give them to Ed and he can make them.
I don't have any problem with that.
I'm fine with that.
Obviously substantive changes have to get discussed, but those are not.
Yeah. But I used to do that. And the next paragraph, I would suggest inserting because Ms. Sweet usually gives us a lot of memos. The one that was dated 11/5/24.
What paragraph are we on?
Next paragraph.
Next to the last. Okay. So you're dating the memo. Okay, that's fine. That's a substantive change.
Okay. And then Rhode Island General Laws says that you have to, to name the people that vote on a motion.
Which one doesn't?
The last, page 11. We approved like 1, 2, 3, 4 minutes. They should be identified with the people that voted for.
I was very confused about that motion. There was a vote, but people voted, you lumped them all together. And then people voted to approve, but some people voted that weren't at the meeting.
Those who were not present or staying, right?
Of a particular.
So we'll fix it tomorrow.
Minutes.
I have nothing else going on.
So be it.
And Ed, at the very end of the minutes, your name is listed twice. As minutes submitted by.
Oh, all right.
Since we're, since we're talking minutia here.
Let's state it.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Rosemary?
No.
Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes of November 12, 2024 with the recommendations that have been made by Rosemary Eva for corrections.
Second.
We have a second from Dick. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations. Okay. Now we have two other items, but I think we can move really quickly on these ones. Status of Zoning Code Revision Committee. So I'm going to call on our, our planning board liaison onto that committee and that's Tricia Hilton to give us an update. We just had a meeting last night.
So we are moving right along. We're very close to being finished with all of the major zones. We're working on the industrial one, which is last. I think then we'll probably take a quick pass through residential. After that, I'm honestly not sure how much longer the committee will keep going because many of the things in the zoning code that need update are fairly technical. I'm not sure it's the best fit for that committee. So I'll have to see, but we're, we're, we're just a big moment.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Did you, are we mentioning the, the, oh, no. I guess we're bringing, we're bringing that to the North Tiverden Committee. Never mind, I'm getting my committees mixed up.
So, so then update on the North Tiverden Business Park Committee and I'm the liaison onto that, but Ashley participates in both of these committees. And we have a, a meeting coming up on Thursday night. I think that we're, we're in the process now of talking about setting up meetings or charats or, or, you know, public events to invite public business owners and, and the general public, particularly in the North Tiverden Study Area, to make their comments. So that's about where, where we're at. And we're, we have some change of membership going on right now. And Mike Burke is stepping down his chair because he was not re-elected as a, as a council member. He'll still be a member if he gets appointed by the new council, but, but we'll, we'll have to have a, we'll have to have a new chair coming in. Ashley, did I forget anything that I should have mentioned?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that's where we stand there. And so
We have an update from the Harbor Commission next month.
Yeah. We need Chris Schreiber. He is our liaison with the Harbor Commission. They do have some interesting things going on right now with respect to the Marina, that the so-called Chase Marina that is the building that sits under the Secana River Bridge. It's owned by the state, but the state wants to turn it over to Tiverden and, and, you know, find a use for it. But so we should ask Chris, actually, let's put Chris on the agenda next month if, if we can. Well, we'll put him on the agenda no matter what because we never know if we have a last minute cancellation. So Ed, if you'd be kind enough to do that, because we haven't gotten an update from Kristen O'Wile on Harbor Commission stuff.
We could ask to be continued on the agenda as first placeholder.
Well, I don't know about that. We've got too much going on.
No, but just a, two minutes.
The, the Harbor Commission, by the way, does have a harbor plan. So if you're interested in that, you should get the harbor plan. I have it somewhere in my packet.
They're in the process of updating
Yeah.
The harbor management.
Yeah, they have to, they have to do that every so often. So
They didn't come to us last time.
So, so I think unless anybody has any further comments or questions or concerns, I think we're ready for adjournment at quarter of 10. We had a very productive night tonight.
Privilege motion at 9:45.
Rosemary has made a privilege motion. We don't even have to vote on it. We are adjourned at 9:45.